All right, Board of County Commissioners, Bradford County, Florida, March 4th, 2025. It's 9:30. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Spooner to open us up with prayer and a flag salute.
May we all bow. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace, mercy, and for your love. Thank you, dear Lord, for all who have gathered here today. Thank you, dear Lord, for us living in our free country, oh dear Lord. Thank you, dear Lord, for those who wished to be here that could not, and those who are listening online, dear Lord. Help us, dear Lord, in the caring out of our business that we do it in such a way that is pleasing in your sight. Dear Lord, we're asking for your grace and your mercy and your favor for all the appropriation requests that we've made this year, that our legislators will find us favorable. Lord, we ask that you bless us as we work together in our community. Lord, help us to always have a mind to work together for the good of our community. And bless this meeting as we conduct the business, and let it be pleasing in our sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Praise be to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everyone for being here this morning for this meeting. The first item on the agenda is public comments. I'll just call your name when you come up. If you'll please, just state your name and where you live, and you'll have three minutes to make your comment. The first one I have here is from Meridian Healthcare, Marcus Reeves.
Good morning. My name is Marcus Reeves. We're out of 1525 Southwest Williston Road, 32608 Gainesville, Florida. So I've come here today to talk about our disaster recovery team. We recently got a grant to help the survivors of Hurricane Helene. We offer our in-house services, which deal with mainly mental health, so dealing with mental health first aid or the trauma of the storm. The other thing we're trying to do with this grant is link survivors who may still be struggling to already existing resources out in the community. So this could be food banks, homeless shelters, charities, that could deal with property damage, employment assistance, things of that nature. And so I think it's important that we begin a relationship, starting with this new grant, with the counties that may know these resources better than we do. So I'll leave these flyers. They kind of detail our services and what we're looking to build. It's a relatively new grant, so I don't have a fancy business card or anything, but I left my name and number on one of the flyers. I'll leave it with your clerk, and we'll be in touch.
Okay, Marcus, I sure do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Yes, I do, if I may. Is this in other counties, is this being done in other counties as well?
Yes, so right now, we have a grant just covering all of the tri-county, as well as Alachua, Baker, Bradford, and Union. I'm a community liaison just to Alachua, Baker, Bradford, and Union. So I don't know a ton about what's going on in the tri-county, but I'm just trying to, you know, get feelers out there in the other four counties, just so that we can kind of know what's available and what we can direct people who may be struggling, what resources we can direct them to.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. The last one I have is Mr. Steele, Paul Steele.
Paul Steele, 14167 Southwest 101st Avenue, Star. A couple of things on your agenda today. I'm wondering how strawberries and shortcake relate to tourist development, and whether that's an appropriate expenditure of tourist development resources. I'm not sure what regulations go with how you spend your tourist development income, but that seemed like a really strange one to me. The other thing I wanted to raise that's on the agenda, I believe, today is the purchase of the fairgrounds. And the question is, can the county afford to have both the fairgrounds and a conference center? And I think the thing that determines that is, is the conference center making a profit? And is that profit sufficient to cover what the interest would be if the conference center were sold and that money put into an account bearing interest? Then I wanted to shift to your workshops. I tried to watch the workshop on YouTube, and because the people who were making comments didn't come forward, they couldn't be heard. So I would urge you to make sure that you have everybody come to the podium. And one of the things I'm particularly interested in is the, in the last workshop, you covered Cypress Run Boat Ramp, and I'd urge you to put, if at all possible, work that into today's workshop, because I'd really like to make a comment on that, and whether that's an appropriate use of the boating funds. And the other thing, mowing, I noticed came up in the workshop. And I'd like to suggest a change in your mowing approach that would reduce your mowing cost by about 50%. And that's simply to mow only a single pass down all the roads, or to the roadside ditch. And if you do that, there's a lot of environmental advantages. You don't tear the ditch up, which reduces erosion. You also possibly keep the ATV people out of the ditch. And the area beyond the ditch then can develop into a really nice display of wildflowers. We have a really abundant wildflower source here, if we just let them, don't mow them down. And in fact, I think that we could be a tourist destination site. People would come up to view the wildflowers along our roads. So I would hope you would consider that when you think about trying to mow down everything. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Steele. Okay, that's all the public comments I have. I'm going to move on to item three. The special appreciation, at this time, I'm turning it over to Chief Carter.
Mr. Chair, Board, good morning. How's everybody doing? As you all know, we recently had the Station 10 grand opening there in Speedville. It was a great event and a huge success. And, you know, in part of my speech out there, I said that that station really celebrates the partnership between this community and our fire rescue department and this county. And so with that, we had a lot of participation in that station from community members, business owners, that donated quite a bit of money and time to that station, to that facility, to give back to our first responders and the men and women that are out there doing the job. So we have a few of them with us this morning and wanted to recognize their contributions, and just give them the appreciation that they're due, and thank you, and these plaques. And being here in this board meeting doesn't even come close to touching how appreciative we are of what they've contributed. So I won't say too much further than that, but I do want to recognize a few people that are here with us this morning. And so we have, is Keith with us from Gator Fire? Keith, was he able to make it? Okay. So first off, we have Mr. Chance Wilson from Kita Fire Systems. They donated the entire fire alarm system panel and installation and the equipment as well. What would be the dollar figure on something like that, Chance? Do you have that off the top of your head? Over $4,000 worth of equipment and install for that. And so, and Mr. Chance, you made the trip from Tampa area, right, to be here with us this morning? So we greatly, greatly appreciate that. And I think what we'll do is go through and kind of introduce everybody at one time, and then we'll bring everybody up for a photo, if that's okay. In recognition of your incredibly generous contributions to Bradford County Fire Rescue Station Number 10 project, your support strengthens our ability to protect and serve our community. Thank you for your dedication to public safety and your commitment to Bradford County. Appreciate you, Chance. And then we've got Lou and Jim here, if y'all raised your hand, from Florida Southern Plywood. And they donated all of the cabinets for that station as well. And if you haven't been into that station, I encourage you to go down there. It truly is, I said this, you know, at the grand opening, a showpiece of the Gold Coast down there. It's turned out to be a beautiful facility, and really, the cabinet, the cabinetry and countertops and all that are just incredible. And so Lou and Jim donated the entirety of the cabinetry. And Mr. Riddick, if you want to elaborate on that a little bit, I know you were very involved with that process.
Sure, yeah, if you don't mind. I just jotted down a couple of things here, so I don't forget. But when we started Station 10, I reached out to Lou Irwin and Mike Cruz, Lou Irwin of Florida Southern Plywood, Mike Cruz of CNC Custom Cabinetry, and asked if they could help with the cabinets for Station 10. They both said they would get back with me, and I guess Lou talked with Jim Perryman, that's the owner of Florida Southern Plywood. And then they talked with Mike, and it wasn't long that they called me and Florida Southern, and this is what they said. They said Florida Southern Plywood would supply all the cabinets, and CNC custom cabinets would assemble and install for free. And I couldn't believe it. I said, "For free?" And I told him, I said, "All I did, when I asked him, all I, I didn't give him no plans or nothing. I just told him about how big it was." And I told him that. I said, "Look, you haven't even seen any plans." And to be honest, I was just looking for a little help, for, you know, a discount or something like that. And then they said, again, "It's all for free. Everything's for free." And they even asked this, which, you know, I'm putting them on the spot now, but they asked not to even mention their businesses or anything. They just wanted to do it. And I just want to say, these are two excellent companies. They're run by great men and women. And if you just, if you don't mind, just for a second, the more I was talking with Mr. Perryman, it's pretty cool. His great-grandfather, Mr. Peak, lived in a, I hope I don't blotch this up, lived in a house that was actually where the CVS is today. And then later, and they showed me some pictures of it. I started to put it up on the thing. Really, really cool old house with the big, huge columns, and they moved it somewhere over around Cherry Street later on. And then also, his great-grandfather helped develop the west side of Kingsley Lake. Then his great, then his grandfather helped get the railroad from Cedar Key through Stark to Fernandina. And also, let me see, we have great-grandfather, grandfather. Oh, and then also, his grandfather was a judge in Stark, Judge Perryman, years ago. I thought that was pretty cool. And this is just, you know, very brief, just, and then Jim Perryman had a house and two lots on Kingsley Lake, which he actually sold around 1990 to help start Florida Southern Plywood. I just thought that was pretty cool, you know, just a little history. And Mr. Perryman, like I was talking to you earlier, you ought to write all this stuff down. It would make a cool history reading later on. But I say all this just to thank you all very much, and thank you so much for driving down here this morning. The second one is Mike Cruz. Mike from CNC Custom Cabinets actually started out when he was 18 years old as a volunteer firefighter, later retiring from forestry with 20 years. And both of these companies have just really wanted to help out our firefighters. And again, I can't thank you all enough for donating all the cabinets and everything. And again, they look beautiful, but thank you so much for helping us out. And again, thank you so much for taking your time to come here this morning. So I appreciate it.
Can I tell you, another company that we need to mention is Gator Fire Equipment Supply. They supplied the entire fire suppression system for that station, installation and everything. And between all the donations that you've heard about this morning, the cabinetry, the fire suppression system, the fire alarm panel, all that, I mean, that's over $100,000 worth of equipment and labor that was donated to that station, which is, again, thank you doesn't even come close to doing it justice. And we certainly appreciate it, and the community partnership there, and just goes above and beyond. So I think it would be more than appropriate to bring them up and grab a photo real quick. We've got time for that this morning. And one more round of applause, please, for these. Come on up. Mike loves this, I know. We'll get right up there underneath the Bradford sign. Sorry. All right, one more round of applause for these folks, just for their, again, tremendous contributions. And boy, that's all I have. I'm getting out of here.
Thank you all again, and thank you so much for your time to take this morning to come up here. All right, next item on the agenda is item four, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mr. Chair, motion for approval for the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Spooner.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Andrews. Second from Commissioner Andrews, all in favor by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five oh. All right. Next item on the agenda, I'll just turn this over to our to Scott Carnegie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Crosby and Justin DeMello to come up. They have a brief presentation for us regarding the MOU between Bradford County and the city of Stark.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Justin DeMello, Vice President and Engineer with Woodard and Curran. We've been partners with the city for probably about the last five years. Today, I'm going to walk you through kind of the 301 bypass, the investments the city's made for for the infrastructure to improve the downtown city as well as extend utilities out to the bypass, a common commitment between city and county. As you see behind me, quick agenda for today. We're going to recap the the commitments the city has made to improve the downtown infrastructure, as well as throughout the city, both water and and sewer. I'm going to describe that 301 commitment, that 301 bypass connection and the long term effects of that project. I'm going to summarize a schedule, as well as the funding opportunities, both that the city has secured, the commitments the city has made, as well as the commitments the county has made towards those projects. And then finally, we'll discuss those last next steps and action items. So back in 2023, the city made a commitment to improve what they call Collection System Phase Two. Saratoga Heights miscellaneous improvements to the downtown collection system, as well as improvements throughout the the city's collection system. That includes Saratoga Heights Lift Station, Andrews Street Lift Station. But about $5 million in total capital projects that the city has run out, got some grant funding for, as well as some legislative appropriations for to move that project forward. But that's one of the key foundational items of improving that district's area, that part, that northern northeastern part of the city sewer infrastructure. That is following, right, a 20, $25 million investment in the city's wastewater treatment facility that's nearing completion now. That that new facility is scheduled to go online within the next several months, but again, a critical foundational element. So back as well in 2023, the city made a commitment to do planning, citywide planning of their water system. That planning document described upgrading the two water treatment facilities, increasing storage that was identified as a problem in the northeast, northwest sections of the city. We dealt with water age issues and pressure issues in that city. So that planning document identified improving pressure in that area of the city, which included a new elevated water tower and line extensions to help with water pressure and flow in that north area of the city. That project also included, you know, other infrastructure improvements like metering and other line connections, but substantially improving the city's existing infrastructure within the city, as well as planning for new opportunities and new growth. So the we like to describe it, or I like to personally describe it as the city was bypassed and overpassed, you know, by by 301. And and with that, you know, there there's a substantial amount of opportunity and growth out along what we could describe as the new truck bypass at 301. No utilities there currently exist, but there's massive opportunity for growth, economic development and expansion within, you know, Bradford County and the city, provided that, you know, utilities can get there. I think the long term goal is ultimately to to water, provide water and sewer to every spoke, right, in the bypass, but we had to start with one. With the planning document that identified the issues to the north and to the west, you know, we identified that corridor as seen seen highlighted here in red, which is the 301 State Road 16 corridor. City was already investing in putting a water tower out there, extending a water main multiple miles in order to help with the pressure issues in that area. Made sense that that would be the first leg because the city was already making a substantial investment in the water system getting out to that area. This here describes, you know, the rest of the process throughout, you know, legislative appropriations that have been secured for this project, as well as the commitments made. Just recently, or actually back in 2023, this commission authorized some ARPA funds, right, to go towards extending utilities out to the bypass, right? That project was all conceived at that time, right? And then through planning, subsequent design, right, we've moved the process forward to where we are here today. Recently, as early as a couple of weeks ago, city and county got together to to draft a memo of understanding, right? That memo of understanding went back and forth, and then we understand that a recent copy was issued as early as this morning with some edits from from the county. County Commissioner, County Managers got a couple of comments that he wants to make on that, but just so we understand where we're at with this. We want to make sure that that's covered and written into the record for the the changes that are made today.
Right, thank you, Justin. So the only the only change that we'd like to make from the from the MOU that you have in front of you is the addition of some language that would stipulate the timeliness of of remittance from the county. And the city has asked for seven days, seven business days. So if you're inclined to make a motion to approve the MOU, it would be with the additional language of remittance from the county will be made within seven business days of the request.
And and really, it's a just a cash flow issue, right? When you get contractors out with big contracts and you got to get them paid quickly, we want to make sure that the city can has that cash on hand to make those payments quickly to the contractor.
And Commissioners, I did speak to the chief deputy clerk previously, and she said that should not be a problem at all.
Thank you. So so progress to date, I did cover quite a few of these items already, but I'll just summarize them here. Stark Collection System, right, upgrades in progress, right? That's going to improve that area of the city to accommodate, right? Some of that future growth to that area out 16. City moved completed planning, right? They're in design now of the water plant upgrades, the tower upgrades, the line extensions. Those are scheduled to be completed this July. The next step is to obviously move forward with this planning document for extending the sewer line utilities out that corridor in 16. But the the goal would be to provide several options, as well as cost estimates with respect to to getting those utilities out there. We do feel like that design can be done in conjunction with the water design, because we've already done survey, we've already done geotech. A lot of the foundational elements of extending utilities has already been completed. So we are hopeful that, you know, by the summer, again, July, August timeframe, we could be complete with the sewer design as well. So this fall, we'll be moving into construction, right, for both projects, drinking water upgrades, as well as construction, at least bidding, right? Bidding this fall, likely award January 2026, one year construction timeline on that. So by 2027, early 2027, we'd we'd hope to be done with construction of of this project. So getting utilities out to the 16 301 bypass. Beyond that, I mean, really, the only thing that I'll continue to mention is the city's made, you know, some substantial investments in this. Their $14 million commitment into the water system, $5 million upgrading, you know, the sewer collection system, $25 million to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant. The city's making some very substantial infrastructure improvements over the last, you know, five years and certainly the next few scheduled. So this is a very important project for the city and always appreciate the the county's support and willingness to to jump in. We think this is a very mutually beneficial project and certainly something that, you know, when I speak on behalf of the city, yeah, I think it's a it's a great partnership and more more communities, counties and cities should be doing more of this. So as far as project schedule I mentioned, you know, Q Q1 2027, we're looking to be finished. And I'll open up to any questions you guys have.
I just have comments. I just want to say that it's amazing to me the changes that has taken, I mean, taken effect in the downtown city. It's tremendously, what, just like you were talking about, what's being done that so many people don't see with the water and the sewer and everything. But the transformation of of the city, to me, long overdue, but it is wonderful seeing everything that's happening. I came in this morning just to see Cruz out replacing sod on the by the sidewalks, which, like we discussed a while back, if we're trying to pull people into this city or into this county, then we have to make it appealing. No one wants to come in and and say, oh, I want to live here, when it's not that. And so, I mean, I applaud the city and every effort that you've made, every every bit of the work that you've done. I am very, very glad that we could do this and and give this money towards the changes that are about to come. I trust you guys 100%. I am glad that we could be a part of this. As I said, yes, it is the city of Stark and we are Bradford County, but we are all Bradford County, and I want to ensure that we continue working together. And I'm glad to hear that everybody was a part of these changes and the stipulations that we've put on this money now. I hope that no one sees us negatively, because I think that everyone on this board was was it was a unanimous vote to give that money and help the city in making those changes. With that infrastructure getting out to the bypass, then that is going to create a huge change for all of us. And so I'm glad that we could be a part of it. Thank you for allowing us to do that.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Andrews, I'd like to correct you. It was not just a giving, but it was an investment on the part of our county and working together with our city so that we are united as one community. So we're investing in this project so that it would better the the development, economic development for the entire county. That's that's how I kind of see it. But I guess the memorandum of of understanding here is so that there is accountability. It's we we trust each other, but sometimes when something isn't in writing, it doesn't mean anything. But we know that the heart of the the city is to do that, which is good for our our community. So I appreciate you coming to to share what the the phases and plans are and that we note, because we just got to this morning, that the change to page two, D Phase Three, to include that language in this MOA.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to comment, Mr. DeMello, thank you. Thank you for your time. I was able to meet with Mr. DeMello. He was kind enough to take some time out of his day to come up from his home. And and so we met in a neutral area and we went over the project and we discussed some options. And he went over the plans that they had, and this is certainly the best option as far as the route to go. And just appreciate the the time that that you put into it. And we look forward to this project. And certainly with the amended language here, I think the the MOU, if if we're finished with comments, I would go ahead and and make a motion to approve with the amended language that we put in there for the draws to be as listed in the amended language.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any other questions?
Just one question. This is seven days, correct?
We we agreed this morning that it would be seven business days.
Is that enough? Okay.
Yes.
All right. And also, before I call for the vote, Ms. Leah Stark and 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 Justin DeMello, I I thank y'all. Y'all worked very close and very hard with the with the county. And again, I can't I can't thank all of y'all enough. And and to be honest, I'm looking forward to working together with y'all to for more projects to help all the citizens of Bradford and Stark. I I just, again, I thank y'all so much and thank you for your patience, presentation, awesome. I just want to tell you, thank you. So.
You're welcome.
All right. So at this time, we have a motion in a second, all in favor by a sign of aye. Aye, motion carries five oh.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to say something, Mr. Crosby?
I do. On behalf of the city, I think I think we're approving what can happen whenever private public relationships work well together. I think we're also proving what can happen when the county and the city and the state are able to work together on a project. I can tell you this, in Tallahassee, they've been impressed with the fact that the county and the city has worked so well together on this particular project. And I think it's going to set the stage for future growth, particularly in what the the Florida Senate this year is calling for a rural county, a rural county renaissance. And there's quite a bit of money being put aside if it passes through for greater economic development in rural counties in Florida. So I think we I think we hit it at the right time, and I think we just need to keep this momentum moving forward while while the Tallahassee is listening to these types of plans. So we appreciate it. I appreciate Scott Carnegie working with us and and getting the the details worked out, because there was some back and forth, as there should be, and 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 making sure that our concerns were covered and your concerns were covered, and I think we worked through those. So appreciate the staff and the staff work on this project. And Rachel was in that as as well as the chairman when we worked out those details. So we appreciate it. And appreciate working with y'all and appreciate being partners on these types of economic development programs.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, Mayor, did you want to say something? Well, go ahead. Go ahead. Commissioner Spooner, I think, wanted to.
I didn't know my boss was behind me.
Now, just to echo some of the things that Ms. Andrews said, this is very exciting. This is a great investment in just kind of the underlayment of our community. And even as mayor of the city of Stark, we're all Bradford, we're all Stark. And we are stronger together. Having only been on the commission for a couple of years, we have seen exponential growth in the vision of what we're doing and the investment in the community. As you said, a lot of this with the infrastructure, it's unseen by our citizens. But when they receive those services and they receive the growth, or they receive the benefit of the growth, we all do better. The attitude that I've seen a lot in the past, or I've felt within our county, growth is scary, okay? You can either manage growth or it will manage you. So as we look to our future and we look to our infrastructure and how we invest in it, this is how we make things happen. This is how we manage our growth, and this is how we make it better for our community. And when people come and invest in our community, it comes back in tax funds, which gives us even more latitude to do more in the future. So again, thank you very much. And it's a great partnership, you know, as we look back and forth to each other, how we work together. So thank you again.
I just, before you go, I just wanted to comment, because our legislators look at whether counties and cities municipalities work together, and when we can show that we are one, they're more likely to fund the different things that we're asking for, the different appropriations. And this is just one example of that. But also, I just wanted to acknowledge, and I should have done during my prayer, that we are extending our one thoughts and prayers towards Commissioner Nugent and his recovery. And so I just wanted to acknowledge Nugent and our prayers for his his recovery.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, to put y'all on the spot, I I see a few more city commissioners. Did you want to say anything? Okay, y'all good. But thank y'all for coming, every every single one of y'all. And thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just so you're aware, the this MOU will be taken up tonight at the Stark City Commission for Approval. So once they approve it, then we'll be we'll be good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Well, they're all here now.
Do we have a court?
You haven't ever passed a meeting.
All right. Next item on the is a north central, north central Florida homeless. And again, I'll turn this over to to Mr. Corning.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, actually, we're on item five.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped all over. I checked it. Okay, my bad. Yeah, item six, impact studies fees. Okay, San San tech? I apologize. I didn't mean to skip over you. You were hoping, huh?
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Nice to meet y'all. My name is Peter Napoli. I'm with Santa Consulting. We worked on an impact study for the county, and I've got a brief presentation today. and I've got a brief presentation today, uh, overviewing the results of that study, um, and talking about next steps and path forward. It's been a pleasure working with Mr. Carnegie and county staff on this study. Uh, Chris Rowe was also involved, Bryant Miller Olive. He's a, an attorney that specializes in impact fees, ensuring that we follow the appropriate standards and conditions for this study. I guess it's up to me. So, uh, just a little background, uh, the county currently does not charge impact fees. There's been a moratorium for some time on your impact fees. A long time ago, you did have an impact fee schedule. Um, this is pretty common in the state. A lot of rural counties put moratoriums on their impact fees, stopped collecting after the slowdown from 2008 and where there's pretty much a halt on growth and economic development, um, in order to try to encourage that development to happen. A lot of people put their impact fees on moratorium, but now a lot of counties throughout the state are looking at re-activating those impact fee schedules since growth is coming in so tremendously. And, um, this is also an opportune time with, you know, the recent discussion about utility extension out to the 301 bypass area. There's some development opportunities out there. You don't want to miss your opportunity to collect impact fees on that new development. So just an overview, since it's been some time since the county's charged impact fees, just to kind of familiarize and refresh what an impact fee is and what the purpose of it is. It's a fee that's charged only to new development, so it doesn't affect any existing taxpayers and residents within the county. It's collected usually at the time of building permit issuance. It's a fee that's only used for capital, so you can't use it for any ongoing, uh, personnel, salaries, operations and maintenance. Um, and it's a fee that's only used for new items. Um, so understanding that with growth comes the need for expanding service. You need new facilities, new vehicles, new equipment, et cetera. The impact fee is designed to offset the cost of that so that the burden of paying for those new facilities and, and, and new assets doesn't fall all on the existing taxpayers in the county. It's collected from new development as well. There's some legal guidelines around, uh, impact fee collection in the state and they're outlined in the state statutes. There's a whole section on them. Um, essentially what they say is that you have to design these fees in order to proportionally collect from new development. They can't just kind of, uh, be arbitrarily, uh, uh, calculated. Um, you, you can't decide, oh, it's going to be a hundred dollars per new house. Um, just, there has to be a specific formula that's followed. Um, and that's where we come in because we've been doing this in the state for, um, 20 years now. The rational nexus essentially means that, uh, there is a direct tie from the need for new services and the amount of growth that's occurring. And the statutes also require that these funds are held in separate accounting, uh, funds so that they're not, um, swept into the general budget and, and kind of lost within the general revenues of the county. They have to be accounted for separately and then only used for the specific purpose in which they were collected. So to start, we, uh, one of the fees that we calculated for the county is the fire impact fee. So this slide here kind of details the calculation of that impact fee. Um, the general process is you establish a cost basis. So we looked at your existing investments in the infrastructure and assets related to your fire department. So your facilities, the vehicles, equipment. We reduced anything that was funded from grants or donated, um, because you can't charge new development if you didn't pay for it yourself with general revenues. So we only looked at the assets that were funded with general revenues. And then we brought everything up to current days' dollars. So if you had to replace that station today, what would it cost? Rather than what did you spend on it back when it was first constructed? Some other things to point out, this includes only the unincorporated county. So the next step is to look at the capacity. So how many people, um, and how many, uh, non-residential businesses are currently covered in the service area of the, the fire department, uh, the county's fire department? So we excluded the city of Stark and only looked at unincorporated county in that capacity number. And the event, uh, the resulting fee that we got was 498 per dwelling unit. So that's the fee on the residential side. And then there's also a non-residential side that you would collect from any non-residential development. So there's 194 per thousand square feet that's collected from non-residential and then 498 per household. And, uh, if it was a multifamily development, it would be collected per dwelling unit. So if it's a hundred unit apartment complex, it'd be a hundred times that fee. On the EMS side, we did a similar calculation, looked at the cost basis. We looked at the capacity, but on the capacity side, we included the city of Stark in that. So you'll see that capacity number's a little higher. And the advantage of separating out fire and EMS is that you can collect from more, um, development occurring from the EMS side, since the service area includes the incorporated areas of the county. So the eventual fee turned out to be 258 per unit or per dwelling unit and 101 per thousand square feet. And then finally, we looked at the law enforcement, um, the costs of the, the sheriff's department and their assets. Similar to EMS, um, this includes all areas of the county. And the eventual fee was 304 per unit and 119 per thousand square feet. So we put some surveys together just to give you an idea of what other counties, uh, throughout the state are charging for these fees. You could see on this, uh, this survey here shows the fire fee at 498 and kind of puts you right there in the middle. Um, one of the counties you're probably looking for is Baker County. I think Baker County only actively collects a school impact fee right now. But they have expressed interest recently in, in looking at updating their impact fee schedules as well. This is the EMS impact fee, shows you, uh, this is a, a little bit less common of an impact fee throughout the, uh, state. It's becoming more common. Um, a lot of times it's combined with the fire so that the, the, it's fire rescue and includes the EMS assets as well. Um, but it is advantageous to separate them out when the service areas are different and you can collect from more areas with the EMS impact fee. And then finally, the law enforcement or, uh, the sheriff's, uh, impact fee. So this gives you an idea that these are reasonable fees when compared, uh, to other counties throughout the state. Um, the, what the surveys don't show is that what level are they collecting these fees at? It's the, the commission's, uh, discretion when it comes to, uh, what level you want to execute these fees. You could adopt them at 50% cost recovery, um, so half of the fee levels that I showed you or any level in between zero and a hundred. You just can't, uh, adopt impact fees above the level that we calculated. So some of these counties may be adopting at lower levels. Um, some of them may have not looked at their impact fees in, in decades, uh, which is often the case. So when you total up the fees, you get about a thousand dollars per dwelling unit on the residential side and about $414 per thousand square feet on non-residential. And the only other things to point out are, uh, the statute requires that you notice, um, or advertise 90 days in advance of the new fee levels before you can begin collecting them, uh, to give the community a notice that the fees, um, are going to be present. And that we suggest the county consider updating these impact fees every four years. Uh, so there's, these are just three fees, um, and there are many other fees. More commonly, uh, transportation, roads, schools, um, libraries, parks and recreation. We looked at several of those and at the time felt that there wasn't sufficient data and evidence to support the fee calculation. Uh, so some of the things we're looking for is, uh, near term or, or even long term, within the next 10 years, expansion projects for those services or, um, or even, you know, a schedule or a need for expanding those services. Um, but also the funding is important. So on the roadside and transportation side, a lot of those road projects come from outside funding sources. And the only road projects we can look at are expansion. So, you know, going from two lanes to four lanes, et cetera. A lot of those projects have been funded from other sources and they're, they're, at this time, there aren't, um, any significant capacity adding, uh, projects that we could include. So, um, we, we'd suggest the county look at it again in the future if they have more robust plans or more specific detailed plans, um, that include funding or the assumption of funding from the general revenues, um, from the county. And we can help, uh, assist with, uh, looking at that and calculating those fees. So with that, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Could I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, with the roads, so maintaining the roads, that wouldn't fall under that? Because, I mean, that's where, I mean, we, we, um, spend so much money in just trying to maintain them.
No, ma'am. Yeah.
Okay.
Question. So, um, just for clarification, when you're collecting impact fees, it's only for that specific area? Uh, how it may impact that, the, the area in which you're, which the new structure occurs? Or let's say if you had an ingress regress area, any improvements in that that will be used in those specific areas? Is that correct?
With these fees, uh, I presented today, the three, the public safety fees, basically, uh, they are general county fees. So if the growth is happening, they're not specific to benefit districts. Sometimes counties carve out districts and they say anything collected in this district has to be spent in this district. We're suggesting countywide fees. So it's, it's general, it's up to the county. You collect them from any growth occurring within the county and can spend them, um, you know, to your, uh, discretion at, uh, but they had, just have to be on assets or facilities that are needed because of growth. So it has to be an addition or an expansion.
Okay.
Yeah, question. So how do you account for, and I know you just said countywide, but, you know, for instance, let's say the northwest part of the county, if someone has a piece of property there that they're passing on to, you know, a family member and they build a home there and they're paying a thousand and forty dollars or whatever it was. And there's really no change in the impact there. So when you have more dense areas like we do in the south end of the county where there is a lot of impact and especially an impact on our roads down there, which we don't include that. But again, it just, it, it seems to me that, and I know it's very difficult to say, okay, your thousand and forty dollars is going to sit here until something else happens in that district or that area. But again, it just, it, to me, it, it, it's almost, uh, again, uh, kind of an unfair way of proportioning, you know, that, that fee.
Now, that's a great point in that I believe, I have to confirm this with, uh, the county attorney or our, our legal advisor, but I believe it's up to the county, uh, if you wanted to waive fees for specific properties, if you felt that, you know, in a certain instance, it wasn't deserving of the fee. However, I would say that, mm, every county and, and city that I work with or on the state, they, they collect them indiscriminately. If the, if it's a new unit of growth, if it wasn't a house there before and now there's a house, you, they collect it. And it's easier if you don't make any exceptions because then that becomes kind of a slippery slope of, you know, you made an exception here, you have to do it over there. Um, they, uh, it's just, it's, it's the way the impact fees are, but that is, uh, there's often a lot of difficulty with that, you know, the infill growth of, you know, there was, you know, they own this property for a while and they're building a unit on it. But there's really only one way to, to collect them and it's with all units of, new units of growth.
And I think another misconception that might be out there is that these are non-recurring fees. So it's a one-time fee. I know you put that in your presentation, but I think a lot of people hear it and they think that, that something that's just going to come in, you know, to our coffers every year and it doesn't. So, you know, it's clear that what you had in your presentation, but, you know, it should be known publicly that that is a non-recurring fee.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. And, and I would also say that the revenue is, is hard to project and it's hard to rely on, um, because it is closely tied to growth and growth may or may not occur. Um, so in any given year, if, if a hundred units come in, you'll have a hundred thousand dollars spread equally almost between fire, police, uh, police and, and EMS. But if that growth doesn't occur, you, you bring in zero dollars. So, um, often it, it's not, um, budgeted so much or relied on, but when they're collected, every dollar that's collected offsets a potential dollar that would have been spent from taxable revenue or from your property tax revenue. So, um, it does help a lot and it's good to have them in place.
And this might not be a fair question, but I noticed some of the areas that you had up there where we were in the middle, some that were lower than us are, are more populated areas. For instance, Nassau County. And you said that maybe they haven't looked at their fees in a while. But could that also be, uh, you know, just a function of, for instance, you know, their taxes and their tourism and, you know, so maybe their impact fees aren't as high because of that, because they have other sources of revenue that are coming in? Because we, we don't have a lot of sources of revenue that come in, so.
Yeah, it's often the case that, um, they, the counties that have a high degree of tourism like that, um, receive a lot from sales tax and, and surtaxes. So they, they pay for a lot of capital facilities with that sales surtax. Um, so that's one case. Another case is that, um, maybe because they're more densely populated, the cost per unit is a little smaller. They have a little bit more of economy of scale with their services. Um, but yeah, it, it's, it really varies. It's hard to say because we don't know, you know, when the last time they looked at them was. Um, it's, it's kind of a, uh, it's not so much, it's, it's, it's a topic that can, you know, be passed on from commission to commission and, and looked over. So it, it's often forgotten about in, in, in counties.
Yeah, I do have a question because I'll be honest, I'm, I'm a little shocked and disappointed at the same time. Um, I, I guess my question is, how can Clay County just, you know, border right to it? How can their impact fees be 10 to 14,000 dollars? And now you're telling us that we can only get about a thousand dollars, which I'm not trying to, you know, to rip off the people that are coming here to build homes, but I was hoping to get at least four or 5,000 to actually be able to do something. Now, a thousand is better than nothing, I, I admit. But so, so how, how, how do you explain that?
I would say that primarily the highest fees are the transportation or roads fees, schools and parks and recreation. Those three are typically the biggest share of the overall impact fee schedule. Uh, probably in Clay County, that's the case. They collect a high amount in transportation. Um, if we, if, once, once we are, acquire the data necessary for it to be feasible to make that calculation, the county can still adopt those fees in the future. So it's not saying you can't start getting, to get to a level, uh, around there. But at this time, those are the, these are the three best and most feasible fees that we felt. There's sufficient data, um, they're defensible, uh, from a legal standpoint that we can put toward with these now, but leaving the opening for, you know, the potential for the other fees to come in the future.
Okay, because, because like, example, I got, they just put in, finish, well, they're finishing up a 23-unit subdivision off of, I believe it's 52nd. 52nd going in is just a lime rock road. Now the subdivision is all paved. So my phone's just been ringing off the hook. Well, hey, we just spent, you know, three, 400,000 for this, our home. What are you all going to do with the road? We'll see if we had about a $4,000 impact fee, we could have paved that road going in there for them. But with a thousand dollars, and then, and then you said it's only for new roads. So could you even, not that it would be that much, you know, we're only talking what, $30,000? It, it wouldn't pave that road.
Yeah, so the, the, another issue with impact fees is that it can't be, it can't include an upgrade of level of service. So I, I think you could look at that as an upgrade of level of service. There is a road existing, but you're increase, you're increasing the level of service or quality of the road rather than expanding the capacity because you, because there's new development. Um, but the more projects that your staff can identify for, you know, capacity adding road projects throughout the county, that the county would be paying for out of its own, uh, funds, the more justification you can have to adopt a fee like that.
Right. Yeah, because I, you know, because like I said, with all the surrounding counties and us being at a thousand dollar impact fee, you know, when they're getting 10 to 14, I just, you know, we're just being punished for being a rural county. It's just not, you know, again, somebody to come here and pay a four or $5,000 impact fee, they'd be happy to. You know, especially, you know, for what we provide. I mean, so that's what I'm getting at. It's just, you know, I don't, I don't know if there's some way to get this. I've, I've had this conversation with Mr. Carnegie too before this meeting, but, you know, like I said, I'm very shocked and. know, like I said, I'm very shocked in, in this point, this is all, all we can come up with. But, um, you know, so, um, but again, I appreciate your presentation, you know, and um, now the citizens will be more informed like, like I am, but, um, but, um, just something for us to think about and look into.
Can I ask you, Mr. Riddick, the road that you're talking about, is it a county road?
Yes, yes, it's a county road.
That road that we leave, like you, I'm not sure what, what verb is you use, but when we leave that the way it is right now unpaved, that is going to ca, cost the county forever and it's going to cost the county big, much more through the years that it would have done if we paved it. Um, because, and we have recently adopted, um, policy where the, we are trying to get the developers, as they develop these, these subdivisions, that they pave that road because I have places in, in my district that is a nightmare because it was left undone. And so we're trying desperately to keep the cost off of the county, um, by doing this on the onset that, and instead of just, because Jason will be down there putting lime rock to the end of time and, um, filling in holes and, um, as the erosion begins and it begins pretty quick when we have a, a heavy rain season. So, um, I know it may seem that it's like an upgrade, but believe me, it's going to cost us a lot more money by not doing that, that one thing.
Right. And even other, could you, could you use that money for a red light? You know, because we've had a ton of growth on twenty-one B, but yet there's, we still cannot get DOT to put a red light in at the intersection of twenty-one B and one hundred. So, you know, I, I don't know, there's probably been, what, I'm just guessing, a hundred homes built in there? I mean, could we have used that money to, to put a traffic light down there?
Yes, signal improvements and intersection improvements can be included in the, uh, in the cost basis for, for a roads impact fee. So that may be something to look into if we can identify enough of those to, to justify the fee.
Okay, so everything we can add to it, then that helps raise this impact fee up higher, what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Just, just a comment, I guess we've, um, certainly this is something that we have to look into further, but we've had a lot of missed opportunities when you think about the growth and development on two twenty-nine, all of the new homes on twenty-one B and throughout the Keystone area, it's been a lot of development, but nothing collected on it. Um, so this is something that we have to look at, but it's also an opportunity to educate our community because in the minds of the community and the, and the residents, they are, they would think, okay, now the impact fee, now we're looking at fire assessment, now we're looking at all of these fees that they define as taxes. So we have to, um, figure out a way to educate our community and look at what we can do. I know back when the city, um, took, well, they actually were, were trying to encourage development, you know, they allowed that cop to have a, a building out and help them out, but they're gone. So if we don't do something, uh, or if we hold off in, in, in collecting, uh, fees and we encouraged, um, development to come and they decide not to stay, we've, we lost. So it's something that we have to look at, but we have to look at it in a plan for manner in terms of our growth and economic opportunities.
Again, thank you. And I know this is just on here for discussion, but, but could the board go ahead and move to, uh, to move forward with at least putting some type of impact fees in place to get it going and then, like you were saying, you know, come up with other ideas, how to add to it to, uh, make improvements, because it is just a one-time thing for whoever's building a new home. It's just a one-time fee. So could we go ahead and, and agree to move forward with it?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
If, if the board would like, is that the consensus of the board or do we need a motion in a second?
Well, let's do this. Let's, let's have consensus that we'll, um, move forward with it. We'll put it on the agenda item as, in the agenda at next month's meeting, uh, as an action item and then you can vote.
Okay, is that okay with the board?
And part of that discussion, um, can you also put together how those fees will be collected and how they will be apportioned to each of those so that we know that, that each one of the categories that were listed up there, uh, that that money's going into those particular accounts and it's not being used in other areas?
Peter, is that something you guys can help us with or?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I, I was just going to suggest that maybe we just needed to do a, um, community workshop on the impact fees sort of the community would, um, be, uh, available and allowed to answer, give some input.
I would, I would dissuade the board from, from having a workshop on this matter. We've hired a consultant, they've, uh, adhered to the state statute and the laws and they've recommended them out. There's really nothing to workshop.
Right, so is it consented for the board to move forward?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And thank you so much for your presentation.
Absolutely, thanks for your time.
All right, now we'll move on to item seven, Mr. Cornegay.
Item seven is the North Central Florida Homeless Continuum of Care Leadership Council Board appointee. So in your packet, you see the letter that I received, uh, from that agency and they're asking for a board member for their board. It can be a county commissioner or not. You have the latitude to appoint someone else in a leadership position. And ma'am, if you want to, if you want to walk us through that, that'd be great.
Sure, um, so good morning, everybody. My name is Kiana Johnson. I serve as the director, um, of the Continuum of Care for North Central Florida. Um, so as you all know, in the packet, we gave you some information. We serve the five county catchment area funded through DCF, um, the Department of Children and Family Services and HUD, the Housing and Urban Development. Um, Bradford County is one of the five counties that we service along with Alachua, um, Levy, Putnam and Gilchrist Counties. Um, we're looking to expand also as requested by the state to move into Union and Dixie Counties in this upcoming fiscal year. Um, and so we came here today to try to get, um, representation from the Bradford County community for the leadership council. So we meet once a month, um, for the leadership council. So we meet the first Thursday of every month from three thirty to five o'clock via Teams. Um, and so our leadership council basically is responsible for the funding decisions, uh, made for the continuum of care and also the strategic planning, um, as it relates to our funding and services and things like that. We've already started, um, providing services out here in Bradford County. So when the hotel caught fire, I think it was last year or something like that, um, one of our family providers have partnered with Answers and so we are funding emergency shelter for families out here right now. So they're a small, um, area. We also have been providing some rapid rehousing services. So those are our fees to move folks in, get them connected to employment or services or whatever else they may need. Um, and then the funding carries, uh, for a few months to get them stabilized with rental assistance, utility assistance and things like that. We're also serving, um, and doing homeless prevention services. So we also work to prevent folks from entering the homeless system. So again, those things can consist of any rental assistance they may need, um, utility costs. We also have street outreach who has started services out, um, in our rural areas. So Bradford County is one of the areas that they have started working into. Um, we're looking to collect the data for, you know, the needs of the community, um, so we can, you know, better serve Bradford County. We think that, you know, the folks who live here in this area know what's needed, um, you know, best for the residents. And so we're just seeking to see if we can get somebody appointed today.
Okay, is there any questions? Is there anyone that would like to serve on the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, our, uh, Community Paramedicine Director, Lieutenant David Weeks would be a recommendation from staff if none of the board members would like to serve.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. That'd be great.
Yes, it doesn't have to be, um, it doesn't have to be anybody from the commission. So in Gainesville, in Alachua County, Dave appointed their Director of Community Support Services who serves as the Chair of the Board. Um, and then also with the City of Gainesville, previously their Chief of Fire Rescue before the, um, Special Advisor to the City Manager took over, um, as the chief left and moved back to Baltimore. So that would work for us.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I don't want to press Lieutenant Weeks into service, so maybe we should, maybe we should hear.
Ask him if he wishes.
Right.
Okay.
I got you.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
If that's, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, and do you work with, um, existing programs that's in Bradford County? And I know there's a, um, basically a homeless shelter, so to speak, for the women, Brian Davis, who runs that program off, I don't know. What's in?
We, we, we are not working with him currently. I heard about him when we came out and did our annual point in time count, um, the end, the last week of January. So we were out here doing our count in the community, um, and I did hear about the services in the house that he, you know, has, but I haven't made contact with him yet. Again, like I said, we are funding Answers. We're looking to build capacity out here. So any providers that, um, you know, we're able to access and get, and get information to about how the programs work, how the funding works and things like that, we're more than happy to do.
Okay. Um, and Commissioner, um, Mr. Chair, with the suggestion from Mr. Weeks and he is saying that he was be willing, I'd, uh, offer a motion to, um, appoint Mr. David Weeks to that.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Spooner.
Second.
Saying from Commissioner Andrews. Any other discussion? All in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye, five oh. Thank you so much, I appreciate you. Right, item eight, um, Nathan Thornton. Thanks for your time and patience.
Anytime. Uh, Nathan Thornton, uh, President of Net Group and Mini Creative. Um, this is our annual contract for the recommission's website. Um, I'm just here to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Any questions?
Yes. Can you, um, help us to keep it updated regularly?
Yes, um, is there something you would like on there?
Just that the updates, if they can occur, um, frequently, whenever there might be a change or new information or, or something like that?
Yes, so the county staff has access to update the, um, meeting information and then we can put more information on there such as events and things like that.
Mr. Thornton, you're, you're here now, right? You're, you're, you're back home.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. If there's any other questions, do we have a motion to continue the contract with, uh, Net Group?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Daughery?
Second.
Segment from Commissioner Andrews. If there's no more discussion, all in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nathan.
And Mr. Thornton, if you would, uh, just engage with, uh, Mr. Cornegay and Ms. Brown as far as scheduling and, and just, you know, keeping things updated. Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on to item nine, uh, the clerk's report.
We don't have anything. We have nothing.
All right, thank you. Sheriff's report.
I have a Lincoln report, but I'm going to air this down for about an hour.
Oh, good.
Take your time.
Uh, Mr. Thornton, I'm kind of upset with him. I'm not sure if we're going to renew ours. I just looked at both the county's, well, website, man, great job on that one. I'm a little jealous, but, uh, but we'll be getting with him to update ours too, because it, uh, he did a phenomenal job, what I seen there with Lafayette County, pretty nice. He got that from us, but no, I want to give y'all a quick update and Jazz is with us and I had, uh, Zach was here also with her, but he got called. Um, but this, this, you see this? Want to give Zach some credit, but the majority of this work goes to Jazz, excuse me, her married then now Panther, um, in regards, she'll always be a dissuader to me, but just knowing her, her, my daughter Chiller's together, she's a, a great asset to our agency and our victim advocate. But I already can see, nobody says it's not my job. If you go over there, you'll see that everybody does multitask, kind of learn, because one person's out, somebody's got to step up, whether it be nine one one, emergency management, uh, everybody's kind of dual trained in doing those things. And she's one of those individuals, so it's similar to Zach. As soon as you go to a hallways, you got an idea. I'll be honest with you, most time they bring the ideas and what you see from our social media, to our videos, to this handout, comes directly from them and it's their ideas. I just get to smile and take the credit and read from it, but, uh, and they tell me, uh, most time what I need to be doing in, in regards to it. But you look real quick there, it's very nice, colorful to look at, table of contents will guide you through it and I'm not going to read everything. Just want to highlight the work that they put into it each and every year. Uh, gives you a little bio of myself and the Chief Deputy who does most, uh, most of the chores, I'm the politician and the bunch. Uh, Chief of Operations, Major Concare. Uh, along those lines, you'll see the command staff. And as I, y'all know, you can reach out to them directly. You don't have to come through me. We meet regularly, routinely. Uh, when you make that call to them, you're bypassing me, which usually just gets in the way. I'm not offended by that. I think most y'all have done that. If you need something, call them. They, they know more about it than I do. Uh, I am truly blessed with a great staff that keeps this thing going each and every day. We are a full-service law enforcement agency. We don't just do arrests or investigations or patrol or just jail, it's code enforcement, mapping, nine one one, emergency management, animal control. We're truly a full-service agency. With that being, the, the Patrol Division, you'll see it there, traffic safety, nine thousand four hundred and ninety-eight traffic stops, seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-four written warnings, nine hundred and thirty traffic citations and seventy-six DUI arrests. So the Patrol stays quite active. When you're looking, that we're down to total sworn that probably worked the road, twenty-five, twenty-six. The rest of us investigators, drug unit, those type things that you see go through. Uh, calls by the number, this is impressive, people understand the nine one one center, and what they deal with. But you look at two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven offense incident reports, those are actual written reports, not just the person you go to and you say, and you, the cat, you know, they dispatch you, you code it out in the dispatch system, no law enforcement resources needed or whatever the, the call may end at, it's not necessarily a written report, which is the majority. We have that, one hundred and twenty-eight burglary reports, two hundred theft reports, one hundred and thirteen fraud reports, which has become the big issue, credit cards online, people being taken advantage of. You don't have to go into a bank and rob it with a gun anymore, they're sitting at home in a computer or their cell phone linking somebody to steal your money. That's become, it used to be bad checks when I first started law enforcement, everybody wrote checks. Those days are gone. That whole system has changed and we deal with fraud and theft via that way every single day in a small community. Two hundred and thirty-six assault and domestic battery reports, fifty-six missing person reports. But you look at those missing reports, probably eighty percent of those are female. You can't get a boy to run away from the house, he's got to eat somewhere. You know, it used to be you look, see if their purse was gone, you knew that they probably ran away. Now you look, see if their cell phone's gone. They'll leave the car, they'll leave their purse, but they're going to take that phone. So a lot of those type things. And sixty-seven death investigations. That means whether it be via suicide, whether it be via natural causes, every one of them are investigated as if a homicide. Uh, we have to leave no stone unturned, uh, just to make sure what the cause is. Our professional development training, uh, every month deputies receive training as part of the process, uh, that we have there. Our school safety and guardian program, we don't call them school resource officers anymore, they are school protection deputies. Their main goal is there to protect. When I first started, this is the county's first, many years ago, long time ago, when the Telegraph had the headline Deputy Sheriff needed at high school. Mark was still too young back then, he was still in school, but that was a big deal. What, what's going on? And then I, and that superintendent got voted out that election term. And then three oh one changed and we took the parking off three oh one and we had a school, school superintendent to put fence up around the high school and it's like, what are you making it look like a prison? Go back in time, they got defeated in the next election term. Fast forward to the day, it's where's my deputy, where's my fence, where's my cameras? The, the whole system has changed in what we do. And I can tell you that putting deputies in each of the school has reduced our calls, has reduced our crime, our criminal mischief, those type things. The bullies don't show up anymore because we got a place for bullies. And that has made a difference and we should have done that a long time ago before we were ever mandated to do that. Best, one of the best things is being the sheriff that we've ever accomplished was putting a deputy in every school. But you look at that, uh, the guardian program, one hundred and forty-four hour initial training. These are educators that step up and do the extra to protect our kids. Kudos goes to them, they're not being paid anything extra, nothing, but they decided to make that sacrifice. And if you've seen and been encountered the situations through the Marjory Stoneman Douglas, being a part of that, touring through the school, watching videos, um, in Texas, when we went through all that, you've already, watching those videos and seeing that teachers sacrificed their lives and their students didn't have anything. watching videos, um, in Texas, when we went through all that, you've already, watching those videos and seeing that teachers sacrificed their lives and their students didn't have anything. All it takes is one brave teacher to stand in the way and change the direction. Cause I go back to Mike Tyson. Everybody has a plan until they get punched in the nose. And we've learned through those instant instances all across our country, that one person giving some resistance back changes the whole directory and saves lives. That's why we don't wait for a SWAT team. We, we, we attack the, you know, the, uh, active shooter now. We don't sit and wait. Everybody knows that. So the training has changed, the ideology has changed, uh, with the North Florida Technical College Criminal Justice Program, educating kids. As you'll see, our explorers is probably our most diverse, diverse program we have within our agency. That's how we've been able to diversify over the years, taking these young, uh, women and men, sending them through the academy and working back here where they've grown up. A lot of times they come on board, they've been around us three, four, five years and they step right up and become active deputies within the agency. So that, that's been a lot of progress. You'll see our explorer program there explains it. Our sheriff's posse. That you see at events, football games, sporting events, fairs, those type things. Not only with the horses, but the side by sides. We have a missing person. We have sent them to different counties to assist with in search of missing children or adults. They do a lot. That's all volunteer. That, that's, there's no cost. Our criminal investigations and drug task force, one hundred and fifty-six drug narcotic investigations. Thirty-three financial fraud investigations, ninety-three special victims persons investigations, fifty-five property crimes, one hundred and fifty-eight others. All the different categories in there. So that's what you see of, with six investigators that, that are able to accomplish all that. So, uh, the four hundred and ninety-five cases resulting in three hundred and four arrests with a clearance rate of sixty-one point four, when the state average is around twenty-three, twenty-four percent. Pretty successful. The BCSO SWAT team is compliant, you know, is there, they go through their training. And that's with us in Union County, Sheriff Whitehead and I. Spend the money. And also with our fire rescue, we have two, uh, rescue paramedics that are assigned to the SWAT team that train with them regularly. And their arms. So they're, they're there in case something bad, they're, they're doing what they do. Communication center. These ladies and men, they're setting a bubble, twelve hour shifts. When you call for them, you really want them five minutes before you call. Everybody's in a panic. People are at their worst. And when there's a wreck, back in the old days, we'd find the nearest phone or payphone to call in and say, hey, there's a wreck. Now, when there's a wreck, everybody's got a cellphone and there's ten, fifteen, twenty people calling at the same time. And they haven't hit that button. Or heavens sake, let the power go out in the city. Everybody, and the first question is, how long's it gonna be out? Nah. But we need that information because when the line men are out there searching, they need to know where these locations are at. So it gets very busy. But these, they have the toughest job probably in our agency. And you look through that, the communication center, sixty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-nine recorded calls. These are the recorded ones. Fifty thousand four hundred and thirty-five telephone calls were answered, fifteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five or nine hundred, nine one one calls. Thirty-one thousand were CAD calls recreated. That's remember I said we do actually written reports? These others may be a barking dog and they get there and they go talk and it was a, a dog got, you know, caught its leg in the fence or it's a, an animal got caught. Whatever it is, there's all types of calls that we go to that doesn't necessarily generate a report. But there is a documented, time stamped recording of that call that comes in. People, public records request those every day. Whether it be an accident, whether it be a neighbor fussing at another neighbor, whether it be a, you know, all types come in. And twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-eight property checks. That's where deputies, when they're on patrol, if you're leaving on vacation, you call us. They enter that location on the, the system. The deputy's gotta be there to clear that call off of their screen, cause all cars are GPS. And if you look at the legislature this year, they're looking at GPS in all public safety vehicles. And they wanna create the law where they consolidate all nine one one centers to be exactly what we're doing in Bradford County. It's coming out of a, a senator, out of Tampa, who have twenty plus other police agencies with comm centers and second save lives. So they don't wanna consolidate all the fire rescue and everything has to be GPS and you'll be dispatching the closest unit. Cause if somebody's breaking in your house, I don't think you really care what color uniform they have on. You're having a heart attack and one of your loved ones are hurt. I don't think you care what's on the patch, whether it says Bradford or Stark or whoever it may be, or Clay, whatever it is when you call for help. So they're trying to resolve that statewide to fix the communications problem that we deal with every natural disaster we have. Man made or God made. It's always been a problem. They're trying to work on fixing that. And they've got some other things in that language, but we're already doing what they're proposing. And I've been reached out to and I'm actually corresponding some response back to them and testifying. So, uh, to show how that works. Can't speak enough of our corrections bureau. As you look down there, you'll see, uh, the ladies pretty much run the show in that division. But year after year, being the sheriff for sixteen years, it's nice to be able to go home, put your head on a pillow and go to sleep and not worry about it, know that it's being taken care of as it should be. Through standards, training, um, you look at our jail and every inspection, how clean it is. I watch other situations all across this country. People say, have y'all been there? Have you realized how bad it is, how terrible it is? We have a very well maintained, uh, cor- corrections, I call it the jail, but, uh, corrections system. And they also are over the sexual offender, sexual predator registry. They did do a new structure last year. Jail operations, judicial services, and it talks about what that is, jail programs. Very proud of this. Started last year. People come to jail, they're gonna get out. Ninety percent of them, we're gonna live with. We're gonna go to church with them. We're gonna be in Winn-Dixie with them. We're gonna be at Walmart with them, CVS, wherever it may be. Where can we, we go see these individuals. Most of them aren't bad. They just make bad decisions, bad choices. So with that being said, we've added a new program section that is fully funded from the inmate welfare funds. These funds are generated from inmate commissary, phone calls, video visitation, putting these phones to good use of priority. With the help of programs coordinator, many volunteers, community partners and our jail tablets, we are able to offer a full list of educational, reentry, behavioral, spiritual, mental health, substance abuse and group programs. In a year's time, we've got two thousand two hundred and fifteen certificates issued. And a wide variety of topics, whether you want mechanic work, religious work, commissary, I mean, uh, cooking, what do you call culinary? Of type things, they're all there to get certificates. So when they get out, they have something to help that. Dr. Brody from Santa Fe is fixing to step up and help us with some more resources. We've had programs come in that kids that were in high school, they got in some trouble and they're sitting in our jail to work them, to make sure that they meet graduation requirements by the time graduation comes. So working with our local school district with Superintendent Hartley has helped some of that occur. We don't have as many as other jails. We take it on a case by case basis. We want them to be successful. These are the people we live with. Jail operations, our average daily population was one thirty-six, but let me assure you that's going to increase. New administration, that's gonna increase. We've already encountered two ICE inmates, uh, stolen car out of Melrose Park, Illinois. Found their way to Bradford County, uh, they were arrested. One had a fake ID. We get them to our jail, you know, we use ocular, not just fingerprints anymore. We have a lot of different ways that they weren't who they said they were. The other one had a suspended driver's license. I guess in Illinois, they give illegals license, but they didn't follow the rules to get here, but, uh, they were driving on suspended license and a stolen car. We got the state dropped charges. ICE picked them up within forty-eight hours of making our contact with them. So we're gonna be, but the population's going up. The feds are working with us to increase that population. We're trying to find bed space throughout the state of Florida. So we're working on some of those things. One thousand one hundred and eighty-three inmate gains, one thousand two hundred and seven inmate losses, martial gains one hundred and fourteen, inmate martial law losses eighty-eight. One hundred and eighty-four felony registrations. That's people that get out of prison, have to come and register with us that they're in our county. If they fail to do so, they violate the law, we go get them. Incident reports, one hundred and eighty-four, disciplinary, uh, disciplinary reports, two hundred and nine, twenty use of forces, seven Baker acts. That is phenomenal for facility. And Miss Andrew, I think, you know, working in institution, that's, that's really low.
Very low.
Very low numbers for use of force and those type things. Our medical, we had two thousand sixty-five inmate sick, sick calls, sixty-one medical transports, which kudos to being right next, but Chief Carter and his staff were able to do that. I sent y'all one on, uh, the other day that saved us a hundred and something plus thousand dollars. Because now we're making sure they all, if they qualify, we sign them up for insurance. Takes about seven, ten minutes. They qualify. Uh, the vast majority of our inmates now have healthcare. When they get out, they have healthcare. So instead of us having to transport to Lake Butler, we're able to use our local facilities now, which helps in transports and those type things. And we're not footing that like the other day would've been that hundred plus thousand dollar bill we'd had to pay out of our coffers for an inmate. They had health insurance, cause the law says you shall seek it from them first, secondary is us. And right now, as of today, I think we have everybody but three inmates covered with health insurance. So we're, we're pretty good. Forty visits to doctor's clinics, seven hospital admissions, one thousand seven hundred and twelve blood pressure checks. I guess mine would be up if I was there. Uh, one hundred and eighty-four employee drug screens. You know, we do drug screening for new employees, but also randomly you get in an accident, something happened, use of force, we drug test you. Imates on suicide watch, eighteen. Matter of fact, we just had an incident where two inmates saved another. He got sentenced to ten years and tried jumping off the second story of the, the thing, but they, they caught him and, and, uh, was able to, to kudos to the, the inmates. Both of them were local inmates that we, we deal with pretty regularly, but they, they stepped up and did the right thing. So big kudos to that. But the inmate animal services, phenomenal. Two ladies do this, by the way. And then we use inmates to clean, feed, do those type. But the two programs that go out and do what they do, all their programs that they have there, intakes one thousand two hundred and forty-one. That's a lot of animals. That's a lot of dogs and cats. To say that they're not busy is an understatement. I mean, they stay really out there. Outgoing one thousand one hundred and six, thirty-four bike cases that were reported. A lot of them go unreported. Calls for service, two thousand nine and fifty callouts after hours. So them two ladies stayed busy. Judicial services. People coming in and out the main part of the courthouse, not here. We don't give any security to the, you know, some of the other constitutional officers. We don't, you know, from the tax collector, property appraiser, supervisor of election, but the main part, we make sure our clerk's protected. He's got the checkbook. But no, that being said, I'm being facetious, but they come in and out, most of that's for court, jury trials, see the state attorney, see the public defender. With that being said, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and nine people went through that metal detector. Think about our population. That's our population in Bradford County. Now, some people unfortunately come more than once. People that get traffic citations, you know, those type things are in and out. So you deal with a lot of that. But misdemeanor court hearings, one thousand four hundred and ninety-five, felony court hearings, one thousand four hundred and ninety-five. And I want you to understand, a lot of that's generated from prisons. They commit a crime out there while they're incarcerated. So a lot of, there is a lot of transports to and from DOC, all over the state. Juvenile court hearings, two hundred and seventy-nine, dependency hearings, one seventy-five, pro se hearings, one sixty, trials, thirty-three trials. And during this time, they're in and out the court, what they're doing, one hundred and ninety-eight arrests. Usually when they show up, most time they, uh, they, they, they got a warrant form or while they're in court, the judge places them under arrest. So they're doing that through the court services for those four that work that in and out daily, um, in regards to it. Immate, uh, on the judicial services sex offender unit, we have two hundred and fifty-six registered sex offenders, seventy-nine registered sex predators. And we did one thousand five hundred and eighty-one registrations completed. That means they have to check in. We know what they drive, what their email address is, all that. That's routine. So we're, we're following up, make sure we know where they're at. And had zero arrests, which is phenomenal to me, that everybody's in compliance. And that's by strict process. And I know you step out of line, we're issuing a warrant, we're putting you back inside the, the gray bar motel over there, Lexi Glass Palace. But inmate work crews, um, totaled one thousand four hundred and, one thou, excuse me, fourteen thousand three hundred and four inmate labor hours. There's four inmate work squads, two assigned to the road department, two assigned to the sheriff's office, and they stay busy. They, there's always constantly something they can be doing, day in and day out with the four squads. If I took over sheriff, we had one. So we've come a long ways and growed that program. As Jason and his team are doing the heavy lifting and digging, we try to do the picking up, some ditches we have to mow, we get behind. But when grass growing season's not in, Jason's usually got a host of list of small projects we can get done, uh, pressure washing, doing things like that. But so there's, it, it stays busy. Code enforcement, as you know, we have it, public records request, two thousand two hundred and eighteen public records request in code enforcement. Background checks, one thousand one hundred and twenty-three. People that come in need them for ball teams, churches, those type things, background checks. Property lien queries, one hundred and twenty. When somebody's buying a piece of property, a lot of times the bank makes them come down and make sure there's no lien on their property from code enforcement, as people are trying to get rid of it. Employment fingerprinting, one hundred and eighty, they cover that process. Code enforcement investigations, five hundred and thirteen. Court civil paper served out of the sheriff's office, two thousand five hundred and sixty-five papers served. The physical overview, as you know, there, personal services is six million nine hundred and twenty-three thousand. Operating expenses, one million three hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Capital outlays, two hundred thousand. Inmate housing revenue was five hundred and ninety-two thousand. Grants, we received one million two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in grants for a total budget of eight million one hundred and eight thousand dollars. Our victim advocacy program, as I mentioned Jazz earlier, um, her and, and, um, Elizabeth Nasworth, they do that. She came on when we absorbed the city. Were able to qualify for the call load for another victim advocate. But as you can see, they do a lot more than just victim advocacy. But it is nice. Both of them being mothers, both of them being from Bradford County, both of them knowing the people. I, I, Van broke down one day and called and I think Jazz, they went, went away with a whole lot more than that, cause it was cold. It was one of those cold days and it was a family of four or five little ones. I mean, they're like teeter totters, little ones. You know, we found people that have donated us, you know, we have our Bradford Sheriff charities and, and those type things. But we were able to get them gas money, food. Only he spoke English. The rest of them were kind of, I don't know what nationality it was. It wasn't Spanish, but it was another nationality. And working through that, those are things that we do. Uh, if it's a homeless person, we, we do, you know, we have a go and ride program. We don't have a lot of services here. We do offer rides. We've taken people to shelters to get them where they, unfortunately, a lot of them choose to be that way. They don't want help. But the ones that do, we make damn sure they get it in Bradford County. And that's using a lot of crazy resources, gift cards, money, put gas in their car. The deputies pitched in a hat, you know, right there on the side of the road and got them cash because his car broke down. He spent what he had, you know, trying to get back to where they had a home. Little kids, they didn't go away hungry and they didn't go away cold. She was like, what if they break down again? I said, well, they're not gonna be here. But she goes, well, I don't want them to be cold out there on the side of the road. So we had blankets and toys and that poor van couldn't take another, other anything. So we, we got wonderful people. Altrusa Stark. Every time we deal with victims now, they, they, if you can see one of the pictures here on page twenty-one, there's bags full of stuff and, and animals and that we deal with victims. The deputies have them in their patrol cars that we give to kids. It occupies them sometimes. You go to domestic violence incident, a bad wreck, a house fire, whatever it may be, we have something there to kinda occupy the, the young ones, the innocents of that. Awards and recognition, it's all there. I don't wanna go through that, but you see the pictures of what we do. We try to give you an annual report to keep you updated on what we're doing. We work with the taxpayer dollars. We're one of your largest budgets. We wanna make sure that you see what we're doing. Any questions?
One, one quick question in. How many, um, federal inmates do you have?
Currently today, I have not looked, but I think we just took on some more. It's forty-eight.
And do you have an increase due to, I, I think?
We're doing about thirty, yes ma'am. And they're, they're, they want more increase. They, they're looking for bed space. The state of Florida's looking for bed space and so is the federal government. I've actually sat with Tom Holman himself. I've sat with our state leaders and been talking to our legislators. We're all trying to fix because Baker County couldn't get enough to survive about Baker County, but he's full. They called us, need more mattresses. We said, don't give away our mattresses. Don would not, I'm sorry, we love y'all, but right now we're holding on to what we got. We see it coming. Well, we're starting to pour a lot of people that are in our country and I'm talking about criminals. People with extensive criminal histories. That's the focus and that's where we're going.
Sure. Thank you so much. This is, this is awesome. I, I look forward to reading more into it later.
Yeah.
Very, very nice and, and very well prepared. Thank you.
I've got one for the city of Stark tonight. I didn't read no their numbers, but I, they get to get twice. They get to see me twice. What a blessing. You know? But y'all, well, thank you. We could do another spot, y'all.
If I can make a second, yes. I was gonna speak about what you said about the schools and, and, um, how the fence, you know, now it looks like a prison. It's the same thing with the county, uh, changes. People don't like change. And, um, sometimes they're very vocal about it. And other times they just sit there and, and think, what are those crazy people doing? But, um, even in the prison system, change sometimes is, is for the better. And now, like you said, in our school, the one thing we want is our kids to be protected every day. And I thank you personally, um, for everything that you do, the phone calls you make. Um, I don't know how you knew we'd been involved in a wreck the other day.
I get paid to be nosey.
I know, I know. And you do that well. But thank you. Thank y'all, all of you. And Dawn and her group, it, it's a tough job. And a lot of people, um, you know, sometimes thinks that you're, you're doing too much. But like you said, when those inmates get out there, you're gonna see them again. And hopefully, somebody, somewhere with the right words, with the right encouragement, will change that life around. And that'll be one less inmate that you have to deal with.
And I've lived in this community long enough, I've seen that happen over and over and over. Just like you got that recycle bin next to your trash cans.
Yeah.
Not everybody's a throwaway.
That's right. And so I thank you for what y'all do. It's a big job and takes a lot of staff and, and, um, so...
The biggest priorities of the sheriff is our kids and our old folks. And I'm getting to be one of the old folks, so that's, that's a priority because they can tell you, every school protection deputy knows my marching orders that if somebody comes on our campus to harm a child or a staff member, I intend to show up and then be dead.
Yeah.
Don't bring harm to our schools or our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, Sheriff, I might have zoned out for just a second there.
Can I have some?
I just want to say, the, uh, emergency management division, I think you might have glazed over.
Oh, I probably did.
But, but I know that we always, you know, give kudos to Major Witt and I just want to, you know, it goes without saying, he does an excellent job. And I just want to make sure that, uh, he gets the recognition.
That kid, I say kid, that young man, that's, I'm getting that old syndrome, everybody's younger than me, but let me tell you that what he does, people never realize how much he spends away from his family, his time. But he's got OCD. Don't dare go in his office and move something because he's gonna find it. He's, I, I do it intentionally. But when the coffee pot runs out on one side, he kind of catches me with knowing them over on their side, uh, getting the coffee. Because that's what keeps us going, that caffeine and donuts. So appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Right. County managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to let you know that the, uh, county manager's annual progress report is coming up next month. And there's no way that I'm gonna let this sheriff go longer than I go. So just, but the difference between me and him is I'm gonna bring snacks.
Bring us some snicker bars.
Yeah, just be prepared.
Mr. Corningay, before you go on and Sheriff, I know it's a little bit further out, but I did want to mention, I know you have the shoot with the sheriff coming up, April twenty-fifth? Is that right? April twenty-fifth. I, I, I know it's a little ways out, but you know, y'all put it on your calendars if you want to be a part of that. So I know you'll bring it up again before then, but, uh, just wanted to mention that. Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, the first thing that I have is a, uh, fairground property update. Um, there's been a lot of movement, a lot of moving parts here in the last twenty-four hours. Uh, I just got a text from our attorney about an hour ago. And, uh, it says the Fair Association Attorney just reached out to the BCC attorney this morning. And we will offer a full report via email later today. So that's where we're at with that. Um, next thing is we had our employee appreciation day scheduled for, uh, day after tomorrow, this coming Thursday. Due to some logistical and supply challenges, we, we need to reschedule. Um, we have two dates to propose. The first is next, the following Thursday, March the thirteenth. Or then two weeks after that, Thursday, March twenty-seventh.
So one better than another, or?
Maybe the twenty-seventh. Give it more time planning.
Either, either's fine. We can do it next week. Um, but if you'd rather wait three weeks, we can do it then as well.
All right. Do we have enough time to put it together? If we do it on the thirteenth, is everything planned and?
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
If we do it on the thirteenth.
Thirteenth be better?
Be best for me.
Okay. Are you, everybody good with the thirteenth?
I'm not, but.
Okay. Well, we, yeah, we can do it on the twenty-seventh.
I have an appointment that morning, um, but we'll do it around noon, right?
Yes, ma'am. Eleven to one, I think is what we settled on.
Chris, would the twenty-seventh be better if the thirteenth aren't, or?
Right now, the twenty-seventh would be better for me, but I mean, don't stop the show because of me, please.
And is that date?
Um, I'll, I'll check and make absolutely sure, but that's fine. Let's go ahead and if everybody's good with twenty-seventh, we'll do that.
I'm gonna just have to call and see if, uh, I got a worker doing it.
You gotta talk to the boss, huh?
Yeah. No, it's fine with me.
See, e- either date is fine with me, so whichever one the board would, would prefer, I'm good with.
The twenty-seventh would work better just for, because I have other appointments that morning.
Okay. You think you make it work? Okay. All right, the twenty-seventh then.
Twenty-seventh it is. Thank you. I don't want to put her on the spot, but I know Amber is here, Amber Shepherd, our, um, with the Economic Development Corporation. Is there anything that, that you'd like to update?
Well, she's going up, um, because I would, I did, I didn't know about this date. Is there anything that you need us to do?
Hmm, no ma'am. I, I, I'll probably contact each of you individually and have a conversation and kind of try and figure out how we want the day to go and what the...
And where it's gonna be held.
Well, we, we know it's gonna be at the headquarters, fire department headquarters across the parking lot. So we do know that, just, yeah, like it was last year. So, but yeah, I'll be, I'll be contacting each of you individually.
All right.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to give a brief update. Um, I've been working diligently, um, with members throughout the community, especially Mr. Corningay and his office and staff on, um, fulfilling the CPTA grant requirements. And we have submitted all of our required deliverables. I think we're waiting for final approval um, on the language from the strategic plan, which has been a very in-depth and thorough analysis of the county and all of the municipalities, including in that county, and, um, perceived path forward so that we can bring economic development here. Um, I, I know at the last meeting, uh, we had shared the, the video and I hope that you all have had a chance to review the video. I think it really does a phenomenal job of highlighting the community, highlighting the county and why Bradford County is a, is a good place for business to come and why it's better in Bradford. I think, um, we've seen some very good response activity through our digital marketing outreach. Um, I've actually had the opportunity of bringing four different executives to the community, um, one of which actually came from India. So we're, we're getting some traction and, you know, it, it takes time, really. What we're doing, we're building fruit, we're, we're planting fruit trees, you know, those things take time to, to bloom and produce fruit. And so, um, I just want to be encouraging and let you guys know that I am working diligently to attract businesses that are in alignment with our community values. And look forward to the day when we can say, hey, we've, we've got business that's, that's ready to, to, uh, go ahead and do ribbon cutting. Just to give you a little bit of insight, some of the conversations that I've been having, um, uh, one company in particular is, now, I know this is gonna sound a little odd, but you have to keep in mind with ta- today's technology, Electric Marine. I know, it's a little like, what? But there are, um, there, there is an Electric Marine company that is interested in, in Bradford County and we're in conversations with them. Um, also talking with a group from India about building innovation hub here. They're looking at potentially five hundred acres, if not here. Um, you know, then, then we'll provide guidance and support and build connections with the state of Florida as well so that we can find, um, the right place for this, this organization that's looking to grow. And of course, you know, a lot of this requires a, a significant investment from these organizations to come here. So I think the timeliness of everything that we've discussed this morning, I now need to go back and update. Um, that strategic plan is, it needs to be an ongoing, living, breathing, um, document, so that way we can keep it up to date. But I do see that we are making significant progress, uh, towards achieving the goals that we have of bringing new business to Bradford, helping our economy flourish and helping families and citizens grow. So, um, are there any questions from any of the commissioners?
I just have a quick question. I know you were working with the, let's call it the South Korean delegation maybe, or, uh, some folks there, any traction?
So, um...
That you can talk about anyway.
There, at this ti- my hope was to encourage them to bring an innovation hub here or an incubator here. Um, it's still open in conversation. I've not had any direct response saying, yes, they're ready to move forward with that. And so, um, business development is business development in any industry. I, I can't afford to sit back and wait on them. Of course, I keep that iron hot. They know, um, where we are and I continue to reach out to them and, and share new updates and developments as things come available. New, um, attractive information that will encourage them to consider our area for their next steps. But I will say, um, you know, I took that trip to South Korea and then a week later they had martial law. And so their own government is kind of, uh, in a little bit of turmoil. And since they have, um, gotten rid of their existing president, and so there's just a lot of changes going on in their government. And I think that, um, it's, it's good for us to give them some space to let them sort out what they have going on in their governments and, um, because those projects, we, we don't need to, to bring those challenges, um, to the community. And so, uh, but that is not a discouragement to me. I think it's every, every opportunity, it's, it's a, a numbers game, right? So the more that we can put our information out there to more businesses, more, um, more communities, um, more international organizations, the more opportunity we are ha- are going to have to, and, you know, have these companies and these leaders see our community as a potential. And I kind of look at the law of averages. So my personal goal, I want to get ten different executives to come to the community because my thinking is, if I can get at least ten, then we'll hopefully in that ten, we'll find the right one. On the way here this morning, I was thinking about, I don't know, I just got this picture in my mind of how economic development within any community is really like building a puzzle. And so I see that we're building, you know, the first step to building a puzzle, you have to put together the outside frame and then you can put together the inside pieces. And we're, we are putting together, we're doing a great job of coming together, putting together that outside piece, those outside pieces. And now, as I'm interviewing really, these businesses and that are seeking new opportunities, do they fit? Where do they fit? And if they're not a good fit for us, then we can be a catalyst and, um, you know, be a good team player for the rest of the state. Because if not Bradford, then maybe somewhere else in Florida. And so I think that also builds relationships at the state level. Um, we've actually drawn some attention from some of the state leadership in the efforts that we have made and the traction that we're making. And, um, I hope that it continues forward and we'll be able to solidify some of these relationships and bringing them to Bradford.
And if I could just ask a question, um, are we doing that as well within the United States? I mean, with the big companies, um, have we contacted them?
Yes, ma'am. Um, you know, really, we're looking for a needle in a haystack. It's hard to know who's planning to grow and, and where they're planning to grow and when. Um, and so we've targeted, um, some of those industries that really offer bigger, uh, that the state of Florida will offer some significant incentives to. Uh, that took some research on our end to understand what incentives are available. One particular incentive that I think is very attractive, um, is that it starts at a hundred million dollar of capex investment and the creation of a hundred jobs. And that will allow that corporation to receive one hundred percent of their investment back through the form of their corporate income taxes at five percent per year for up to twenty to thirty years, depending on the need. And so, um, I think that essentially, you know, that, that really attracts large, high-performing, um, manufacturing organizations, those that are involved, um, within the fourth industrial revolution. And so, um, we are reaching out, we are advertising. Now that we have that video, I've really, um, added some, some ad spend onto that to get that video out and also, you know, building those conversations. I've been attending conferences, going through the exhibition halls. I went to CES out in Las Vegas. Um, that was five halls and with a fractured knee and a torn ACL. So, um, I was able to do that on a mobility scooter, which actually, surprisingly enough, uh, gets you a little more attention. So they don't forget you so fast. Um, but I think that we are doing all of the right things to attract the business. It's a matter of, um, growing that exponentially. And one thing that, um, I had suggested to the, the county manager is perhaps utilizing another profile um, through our digital marketing outreach on LinkedIn. Um, I've found that most recently, the spam filters really have shut down email. We can send out four thousand emails, but if nobody's responding, that's not a viable channel. Um, but the marketing through LinkedIn seems to be very valuable. It, it definitely elicits response. And so, um, this is something for consideration that we're talking through, trying to understand what would be the best way. But essentially, um, I would mirror what's going on on my profile. I would create the language and then place that into messaging for a, a person's profile that, that the community might select. But, um, I think we've got some funding still available through the CPTA grant and I'd like to take advantage of that and, um, you know, increase the outreach. I'm, I'm able to do about eight hundred in-mails, eight hundred invitations to connect. And all of this is an automated process every month. But if we can double that, um, then the follow-up messaging that comes along with that can be, can be very valuable too. So...
One of the things at Rural County Days, um, that I thought was extremely effective is they have a video going at their, at their station. And, um, they have property that's identified as available property, you know, and hopefully gets the message across that if they're, and I was gonna ask you, have, have we been able to identify property, like you said, one company said they would need five hundred acres? Have we identified that? And two, is it along the bypass or is it in other areas? And, um, if that might be something that you could put together for Rural County Days. There's a lot of people that, um, come there and see what we're doing in our counties. Um, so I'll let you answer those questions.
Sure. We do have, um, a site selection inventory list that is currently hosted on the NEFEDC website under site and resources. Bradford County has its own page. Um, now that we have the new introductory video and also some new graphics that have been developed through the CPTA grant, we're working on a redesign of the page, but the site selection inventory list is currently available. And it lists out all of the properties, um, that are currently listed and those that we identify that may not actually be on the market. Technically, we can add those in as well. Um, so we are utilizing the GIS planning tool. We have a special relationship with them through NFEDP to get at a discounted rate this viewer actually on our website because Marketing 101, if they're on your website, you don't want to push them to another website, they'll never come back. So we want to keep them on our website. Um, as we are updating our impact fees, there's some information that's going to be adjusted there. We're gonna have to go from no impact fees to low impact fees, so I still think that that's valuable. Um, but yes, there is that listing available. In terms of, um, having a video to present at Rural County Days, I can talk with Pam Whittle and see if we will have the capability of presenting such a thing. Um, however, at the very least, I am able to like quickly navigate them and show them where those, those sites are um, via their phone and have that information available.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the info.
Thank you, Amber. So one other thing I wanted to mention, just to remind everyone, I'm sure you're all aware, there is a, uh, a bill moving through, that will be moving through the, the Senate. It's, uh, SB one-ten. It's the Rural Renaissance Bill that is sponsored by, or Senator Corey Simon. If that bill passes, it's gonna be a monumental achievement for rural counties. Um, it's, it's, it's gotten widespread support. We expect it to, to, to become law. So, uh, I would just encourage not only the board, but anyone, um, that has connections in Tallahassee. Even if you don't, just make a phone call over to our, uh, to our, uh, legislators and encourage them to support SB one-ten. I don't know what the accompanying, um, House bill is, but, but right now I do know it's Senate Bill one-ten. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. And I guess for item twelve, the county attorney report, we'll just wait till he reports back to you and get an update this afternoon. All right? Moving on to commissioners' comments, I'll just start with Commissioner Doherty.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Just a few, um, just so that you know that on April the twenty-sixth, the last Saturday in April, at nine-thirty, we'll have the second annual Shirley Anne Brown Livingston Council Walk and Educational Program. And I'm, I'm inviting you all there. And last year, Mr. Weeks at our department participated in it. And it provides, it provides, uh, the funds from it, provides scholarships to our local students. Um, and then the other thing I just, again, to ask your, um, continued prayers for Danny Nugent, Commissioner of City, and also, um, LD Andrews, sis- um, my sis- sister's... Commissioner of City, and also LD Andrews, my sister's husband, for his recovery. And then Commissioner Doughty is our kind of our eyes and ears with our being on the fact committee for our county. I was a little bit concerned about, you know, the talk of doing away with property taxes or reducing that. So I was going to ask if you can keep your eyes and ears open to just encourage, because that would, if that were to pass, that would be a great financial devastation for small rural counties. So I'm hoping that that won't go anywhere, but I don't know. But it's it's a scary thought. And then I know that Mr. Steele had commented about, you know, their strawberry shortcake. I know it seems on the surface and something that's frivolous. It's not. It gives us direct contact with all of the legislators, all of the, if you can be on that court with the massive thousands and thousands of people who are coming through there, that's Bradford County's signature. And if you go inside of that Capitol and you look up into the seal, there is that shortcake named in honor of Bradford County. So it's our public relations piece that we do during the legislative session during our Rural County Days. And Pam does an excellent job in getting out there and all of our commissioners who are able to attend along with our county manager. We were able to network with all of the people that are out there, all of the other counties and with our legislators. So it's not a wasted investment for that. I just wanted to mention it. And but anyhow, and then the other concern was with the fair. Believe it or not, there's an actual fair that's supposed to be going on this week, but you don't see or hear anything about it. It's not the normal event that we're accustomed to our kids, but there is the agriculture piece that is supposed to be taking place. Is it starting today or?
Yesterday.
Oh, yesterday.
Started yesterday.
Yes. So but anyhow, if we can support the efforts that are being made out there would be of help. So anyways, thank you.
Well, and I just wanted to expand a little bit about the Rural County Days. Like Ms. Spooner said, I can't tell you the people said, oh, I heard y'all were out here. I'm coming down. And then they ask us, when is your strawberry festival? Can you tell me how to get there? So to answer your question, Mr. Steele, about does it affect tourism? It definitely does. And like Ms. Spooner said, people come down and they start talking. People come down and hand you a card and say, if you need anything, let me know. We also take that opportunity, like she said, to speak to our legislator. We talk to people that worked in that building who will, like Mr. Cornegay said, walk by and say, hey, can y'all support Bradford County on this? Believe me, I heard that so many times. We served, I believe, 1,500 servings last year. So that's a lot of people that come and make their way through that line and gives us an opportunity, because that's that's our our time to speak up for our county and why you should come to our county. That's why I recommended the video, because and the other counties as well, one county they they're known for their shrimp, so they they serve shrimp. They there's all kinds of foods and and different things are given. Some have honey, they give out honey just to make sure that the people know in the in that county what they do. So it's a it's a prime opportunity for us to go and ask for funds for our county and seek the help that we need. So it is a good thing. It's one of the best things that I know. And but that that's the reason we serve the strawberry shortcake, Mr. Steele. Just want to thank everybody for their calls and their prayers for my husband. We really appreciate that. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. I thank everyone for being here today. I know it's been a little bit longer meeting than normal.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure, go ahead.
Do you mind if Lizzie Whitehead comes up and talks to us a little bit about the fair?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. I saw you over there.
You're fine. Good morning, commissioners or afternoon. So Saturday morning, we had the youth goat show at the fairgrounds. And then Sunday, they had Pig Way In. And then Monday night, they had the swine showmanship show. Tonight is the swine show. I believe it starts at 6:00 PM. I can send you that information to be clear. But the youth components are still functioning and they're still happening this week. There will be no vendors as far as I know, except for some food vendors there. There are rides that will start, I was told, on Thursday to Sunday, but the youth component is still going on. So tonight will be the swine show, Wednesday will be the steer show, and then Thursday will be the heifer show, and then the sale will happen on Friday afternoon. And right here, it says buyer's dinner and sale will be from 3:00 to 5:00 PM on Friday, March the 7th. So I think they'll start that sale once the dinner is over and I encourage all of you to be there to support the youth in this community and the agriculture side. And I'm excited to see what all will happen this week. So that's all that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lizzie.
Thank you. All right. Again, thank you everyone for being here. Running a little late. It's say 11:33, so if we could take about a 10-minute break and start our workshop, probably about 11:40. Good for everybody? 11:45?
11:45.
Okay, 11:45. All right. Meeting's adjourned.
Board of County Commissioners Bradford County Florida, March sixth, twenty twenty five. It is eleven fifty. We'll start the workshop and as we call this meeting order Commissioner Spooner is going to open us up in a prayer and the flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace, mercy, and dear Lord, we ask that you help us and guide us in this process as we conduct our budget workshop and help us do it in a way that is pleasing in your sight and that it is of an aid and benefit to our community. Jesus name we pray.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to request that we move the presentation from fire rescue to the to the beginning of the agenda if no one objects.
That sounds good. Okay, Chief Carter.
All right. Well, good morning again. I think we've still got ten minutes of morning left. Wanted to bring before you, as we discussed in the last fire assessment workshop, it was brought up about adding staffing to actually decrease overtime. And so just kind of wanted to look over a spreadsheet here that I've made up that that maps that out and shows you the savings that we could that we could potentially gain from from that process. So what you see here on your screen, I'm gonna blow this up a little bit bigger here. Bigger. All right, how about that? Okay, so what you see here is then each individual employee, so all all these numbers are each of my employees of what they worked from January first of twenty twenty four through December thirty first of twenty twenty four, so full year. We looked at the number of PL hours that they used, the number of regular hours that they worked, the number of overtime hours that they worked. You got a question? Personal leave. Sorry. And then E W W C, which as you know, E W W C is what we is what we refer to as extended work week compensation. And that is the built in overtime that is part of their schedule. So if they come to work every A shift and they only work their shift and they go home, you know, there is overtime, there's there's time and a half pay built into that because we pay overtime for anything over forty, we pay time time and a half for anything over forty. But that's not classified as technically as overtime because it's not outside of what they would normally be scheduled. So that's what we call extended work week compensation. And that was an auditing thing. I think that was done many years ago in order to clean that that up a little bit because it looked like we were paying paying, you know, an astronomical amount in overtime to the auditors, but that was not the case. Once they realized it was just their extended work week hours. And so that's why that separation was made again many years ago.
Just one quick question, Ben. How many hours a week is that that they get or?
Well, it depends. It's it's an average of a hundred and twelve hours every two weeks. So each week differs though because of their they work twenty four on forty eight off. So some weeks they may work forty eight hours, some weeks they may work seventy two hours. So again, for each individual employee, we looked at the number of personal leave hours that they used, the number of regular hours that they worked, which is paid at their base rate, the number of overtime hours worked. So this is anything outside of their normal schedule. You know, if we staff the fair, if we staff a football game, that's what we consider overtime. If they pick up an extra shift, that's what we consider overtime. And then number of extended work week compensation hours. And so we added all those up to the total hours worked. So to figure out actual overtime, each one of my employees, every full time employee is supposed to work two thousand eight hundred and eighty hours every year. That's their schedule. So they're supposed to work two thousand eight hundred and eighty hours. So what we did is we added all those numbers together and then whatever that number came to is their total number of hours worked. So then I subtracted two thousand eight hundred and eighty hours from that number to get the number of hours that they actually worked over what they should have been scheduled to work for the year. So if they picked up an extra shift, that would be shown in this. So anything over two thousand eight hundred and eighty hours is what we consider actual overtime. So this is again, actual overtime that they worked outside of what they if they just came to work, worked their twenty four hour shift, they were off for forty eight and that's what they did for the whole year. Then there would be no overtime in here, which you see many, you know, have zero listed in there. And so then what we did with for the overtime pay is we multiply multiplied the actual overtime, this number here by their rate of pay. So by their time and a half pay because everything at overtime is paid at time and a half. So we took their number of hours that they worked in overtime and multiply that by their hourly rate times one and a half. Everybody following me so far? Don't want to go too fast or lose anybody. Okay? And then we took the number of PL hours, which PL personal leave is paid at their straight rate. So that's paid at their base rate. And then we divided that by fifty percent because if we add additional staffing, we're still gonna have to approve some of those personal leave days and fill those with overtime. So we said, let's not do every personal leave day. I don't think that would be a fair estimate. I don't think that would be a realistic estimate. So we took fifty percent of what they used in PL. And we're gonna say we're gonna cover that fifty percent of that with this additional staffing. The other fifty percent we will still cover with overtime. So we added in those those costs. So we took their amount of overtime and the amount of PL, fifty percent of their PL and added those together. And that's this far right column that you see here. And so I did that for every employee over the last year. And the amount, if you take fifty percent of their PL plus the amount of overtime that we paid out for the employees and you add in their retirement contributions and you add in FICA and Medicare, we paid out three hundred and forty five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and sixty four cent in overtime plus fifty percent of PL plus their retirement and FICA and Medicare for last year, twenty twenty four. So if I were to hire, this is our what a new a new hire would come in at, right? Fifteen dollars and thirty cent per hour, which gives them a base salary of fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cent. We add in the holiday hours that they would be scheduled to work with a projected annual salary fifty two thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty cent. You add in their FICA, retirement and life and health insurance. So each one of those employees costs me eighty seven, eighty eight thousand dollars to use round numbers. I multiply that by three personnel and I get two hundred and sixty three thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty nine cent. So then I take how much I paid out in overtime last year, overtime in PL, which is three fifty four thou- three hundred and fifty four thousand, I'm sorry, three hundred and forty five thousand, subtract the two hundred and sixty three thousand from that. And so we we see if we hire three personnel, our minimum potential savings would be eighty one thousand, eight hundred and seventy two dollars and thirty five cent if we hire those those three personnel. I've run these numbers with Ms. Dana to make sure that everything with Ms. LaFollette there in the finance office to make sure that everything matched up and my math was correct and my spreadsheet looked okay for to her. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know, you verified that everything looked looked right and looked and the numbers looked accurate. You know, I rechecked every pay rate yesterday just to make sure that everything was was accurate and updated and best I can I can tell you, board, is that by hiring three personnel and adding that relief staffing, you know, we'd be able to drastically reduce the number of overtime hours that we're paying out.
Now, would they work a straight working hour? Would they work just like everybody?
It worked just like everybody else.
And and let me ask you, you said that they make fifteen dollars an hour.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you multiplied it by something. But that fifty thousand dollars, does that include their extended work?
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
So if they only worked the number of hours that they're supposed to work, their salary should be fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am. But I have an example of an employee who worked a lot of overtime. And as you can see here, let's see, where's this employee? He just got engaged as a matter of fact. But this employee here worked one day on and one day off, essentially. He worked every other day. He worked fifty percent of his life was spent at our department and he added thirty thousand dollars to his base salary because of the amount of time that he worked. Now, if I'm paying that one employee that thirty thousand dollars or if I'm paying three employees, ten thousand dollars, it's the same, you know, it it shakes out at the same at the end, but he's he's spending his time here. He's spending those hours here. So somebody would have to work it and somebody's gonna get paid to work it, but it just happened to be that this one employee picked up quite a bit of overtime and was able to was able to add that to his base salary. But again, at at the the, you know, sacrifice of of being here every day or every other day, essentially.
Can we scroll back to the top?
Sure.
Okay, go go far left. Okay, on that person right there. So he worked seventeen, I'm sorry.
Stop one.
And then he worked how many hours of overtime or go to? Yeah, that's fine. Thirty hours of overtime and then eleven hundred and seventy four of extended.
Yes, ma'am.
So the total he worked was twenty nine ninety?
Yes, ma'am. And he's supposed to work twenty eight eighty.
It says the actual overtime was a hundred and ten.
Right, because that's the amount over that two thousand eighty or two thousand eight hundred and eighty hours that they're supposed to work every year. So that's what they're if if I'm a full time employee and I come to work, you know, every third day, that's my the number of hours I'm supposed to work is two thousand eight hundred and eighty. So he worked a hundred and ten extra hours outside of his normal schedule.
There's one.
And watch it. Chief, so you're you're looking at if you if if each employee took at least fifty percent of their leave time. But aren't there some that don't necessarily take half of their leave? And would there be any impact with that? I know you were trying to give an estimate if at least if it took half of your.
So there's there's some employees that, you know, didn't take any leave time at all. So I mean, there there would be, but that would be a savings to us.
Right. That's I'm saying it could potentially be a greater saving because everybody don't necessarily like when I used to work, I I didn't take.
Right.
I might take a week off, you know, or not take and have a lot of of time accumulated. So you it might be even a greater savings than the.
Eighty seven. Yes, ma'am. And that's why I put minimum because I think this is a very safe estimate and I'm very comfortable with these numbers and saying that this is what we will save. And I think there's a potential for there to be even more recognized savings there.
And that's tremendous.
Yes, ma'am.
They be the one thousand dollars.
And and Ms. Dana, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm sorry, but just to just to clarify, when we do a budget amendment at the end of the year, that's when these costs are captured. Is that correct? So if if we pay, you know, three hundred and forty five thousand dollars in overtime, that's when you move that money essentially and and make that journal entry or or budget amendment. Is that correct? At the end of the year to capture those overtime costs? And so now, if we were to hire these three additional employees, we would just put that into our budget at the beginning of the year. So you wouldn't have to do that transfer at the end of the year. Is that correct? Okay.
That's good.
Chief, how many salaried employees do you have that are just forty hours a week?
I have six, if you include David Weeks and Chris Cooksey.
Okay. So a question I get from a lot of people is why aren't they filling in and so that we're not looking at so much overtime or we're not looking at hiring additional people?
Right. We do very regularly fill in for you know, for for fair staffing, football games, stuff like that. Chief Rogers will go down and work the football games. You know, if we have somebody who is training and we have a need for a third person to be on there. So if it's a brand new employee, we can't put that person with just another paramedic by themselves. So we have what we call third riders. And so a lot of the times Captain Loomis will ride down as that third rider for one, to get a good evaluation on that employee, but also to to again, prevent from having to call somebody in and pay that overtime out. But there are many times where where we do that exact thing that you're talking about.
Because I know like, you know, when we talk about, you know, tightening the purse strings, you know, we got to find out every way we can to be able to, you know, fill in where we can.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, whether it's in the public sector or the private sector, certainly in the private sector, you're gonna do everything you can to fill in because if you don't meet that bottom line, then, you know, there's gonna be some issues. So but, you know, I'd like to follow along that model the best we can because, you know, without, you know, trying to raise you know, the budget in any way. I know there's you're showing a cost savings here, but I'd like to see more of a cost savings.
Sure.
One more question for the chief. I know and Mister Carnegie echoed it as well. When I asked about part time folk and you were saying that it's hard to recruit. I just recalled when I was with the city, all of those fire guys had second jobs. You know, they had part time jobs. And so I'm I guess I'm still wondering if that may be possible that there's somebody looking for, you know, part time job and maybe not to totally dismiss it.
And we do. We have about seventeen part time employees currently. And and matter of fact, we this morning while sitting in commission meeting, we had a a paramedic who turned in his resignation as a part time employee, lives over in Flagler County. He's a real estate agent over there. So he's doing quite well for himself. And so he it just wasn't worth it for him to come work here, you know, on his days, really doesn't have days off, I guess, as a Realtor. But on the weekends or something like that. And so he he turned in his resignation this morning. And that's what we're finding is that that people are either leaving this industry or the ones that are work for another agency, they're gonna pick up overtime at their agency because they're gonna make time and a half, whereas here they're gonna come and make straight time. So that's that's what we're finding. But we have quite a few. I know we have at least two or three from the city of Stark that are also part time with us. You know, as far as the fire personnel go. You know, we have a couple EMTs, single certified EMTs that we have that are that are part time with us as well. But finding somebody who is a a paramedic is tough to have as a part time employee. For one, if you don't work for a month, you fall so far behind in the medical care. It's tough to keep up in that regard. So it's kind of where we're at with that. But it is tough to keep part time employees, but we certainly we do try and we recruit for part time as well. We did just hire a part time EMT who's in paramedic school currently. We're over in the process of hiring her currently. So you know, we're doing all we can to make sure we keep a a good roster of part time employees as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask? Explain how hiring them, I mean, where are you?
explain how hiring them, I mean, where you would place them and, and how it would bring about a cost savings?
Sure. So right now, if somebody, uh, calls out sick, we automatically use our on-call system and we call in someone from that on-call system to come fill that spot. So if we have the ambulance that's here at the, at the courthouse station behind you here, um, if one person calls out from that truck, we use our on-call system and we call somebody in. Well, that person is automatically gonna get paid time and a half, because it's outside of what they should normally work. So they come in at their time and a half rate. Whereas this person, let's say we have a full shift, we have everybody here, nobody's sick, nobody's on vacation, would be an additional person that day, so wherever we could put them, you know, if, whether it be Sampson City, we would put them as a, a third rider on that engine or wherever. Now, the same person calls out sick, instead of me calling in the person from on-call and paying them time and a half, I pull that person off of that engine because they're extra. I pull them from there and put them on this ambulance and I'm paying them straight time rather than time and a half.
Okay. But if no one called, called in?
Yes ma'am.
Um, so they would just be that third, third person?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, uh, and so that explains why you use their leave to, uh, explain, okay.
Correct, and that's, you know, we have a lot of leave requests that we have to deny, because quite frankly, we just don't have the budget to continue to pay overtime to staff personal leave, so we have, we get personally leave requests that we turn down all the time. As a matter of fact, a girl this morning, we were sitting there drinking coffee at shift change and, um, you know, she was like, yeah, my, my personal leave got denied on my birthday or whatnot and, um, I said, you know what, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of it. Somebody's gonna work it, whether it's me working the truck or whatnot, you need to have your, your birthday off, go have, go have fun and enjoy it, so. I said, you got the time off, you know, and, uh, and so with this, we'd be able to pull that, that third person and cover that shift, so.
Chief, in some of the past conversations we've had about HCA, uh, where are we currently at with HCA and transport and things like that? I know we're talking about something different here, but I.
Sure, so with, um, with HCA Hospital, we are still doing their emergent transfers. We've provided them with a list of, what we consider emergent, you know, what would, what would, uh, we think meet the, uh, guidelines of, of, and, and being able to justify taking a, a unit out of county for a transport. So anything that is an alert, so a sepsis alert, stroke alert, um, STEMI alerts, a heart attack, anything like that, we're gonna send one of our trucks, because those are our people down there. We're gonna send our truck to go get them. They need to get to a better, uh, not a better hospital, excuse me, but a, a more definitive care um, quickly. And so those are the type things now, um, you know, they, they use that list, uh, very liberally, I would say. And so if something is, um, is, is, does not necessarily meet that, one of those criteria on that list, sometimes it's, um, it will meet that, you know, they'll, they'll make it meet within those, those guidelines essentially, so. Um, you know, I think that we're still working out the kinks of that, but we are still doing, um, the emergent transfers out of there.
So are they not doing any transfers themselves? Are they coming over here?
They are, yes sir. They're getting, they're getting all the ones that are not emergent.
Okay.
Yes sir.
Okay, cause I saw an ambulance in Clay County at the new ED right there in Middleburg.
Right.
Pulling up, HCA ambulance pulling up and I guess transporting back to Porch Park.
Right.
Regional or medical, whatever it is, uh.
And they do, they, um, and they're, they're in the works, it's, they've had a lot of turnover there at the, at the hospital and so, um, they've had a lot of moving, moving parts there, but, um, I know that they are working on getting an actual ambulance staffed out here, so they can handle more of those calls.
I got you.
But that's something that they're, they're in the process of doing. They have the, the actual apparatus, they just don't have the staff to do it.
Okay.
What was the total number of, um, leave hours that you had?
I didn't actually total that up, but actually, if you give me a second, I can do that.
Are you, that, that's the list?
Yes ma'am. So that's the amount of personal leave, um, nine thousand four hundred and fifty-five hours of personal leave that was used last year.
All right, I'm bored if there's no other questions, so let me just ask the board this. Seeing that this is definitely a cost savings, is, is this something we would like to have a consensus of a board for Chief Carter to move forward? And then if we had to add it to our next agenda to, to, I don't know if we need a, but, but, okay, so we just need a consensus. Is this something the board would like to see Chief Carter move forward with, or?
I would.
Certainly if there's a savings, yeah.
Well, then, that's what I'm thinking, so.
But, uh, like I said, I mean, we still gotta find more ways to save.
Yeah.
Right.
Again, if it's, you know, assisting, you know, from upper management, then,
Yep.
you know, I would encourage you to, you know, get with your folks and try to do that.
Yes. I'm, I'm looking forward to.
You work for him.
Yes.
So.
No, I, I, I'm all about.
I think that's the way that we should, you know, really be looking at things, you know, so.
I'm, I'm really looking forward to, um, you know, presenting our actual budget, our proposed budget. Um, I don't foresee there being much of an increase from, uh, this, this current year, so. I'm, uh, like I said, looking forward to that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes sir.
If I may, Chief, do you have some estimate of how much revenue has been generated by the wall time fee?
Uh, since we started, actually, no, I'm sorry, um, we just got this from, uh, our billing, billing company, but I believe it was, that was fiscal year, correct? So October first till now, we've generated right at twenty nine thousand dollars from the, uh, from the wall times.
From the what, I'm sorry?
From the wait time, when we get to the hospital and we hold the patient on our stretcher. And we've been charging for that and they've just generated about twenty nine, twenty nine thousand dollars since October first.
Are we getting paid?
We're getting paid.
All right. Well, I mean, that is a logistical. Okay.
Years ago, you, you weren't getting that though.
Right.
No, sir. No, we were doing that for free.
Three or four hours and.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And may I ask one more question? And have we made any improvements in our, our building process, uh, for transport or whatever? That, um, I know there was something with the, the Medicaid or are we?
Yes ma'am, so, um, you know, we're, we're still part of that P E M T program where we get the, uh, the offset from, um, from whatever, whatever we have to reduce by is what they reimburse us for, and that's where we pay into the, the fund and they give us back money. Um, you know, and so that's, that's really been a, a great program and we, we've received a significant amount of money from that program, so.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we're, we're happy with our, with our billing right now. Our medical billing is, is going smoother than it ever has, so we're very, very pleased with that.
Okay, well, thank you, great report, and yeah, if you'll move forward with those three positions, that would be, that'd be awesome.
Yes sir. Now, just, just to confirm, you'd like me to go ahead and, and do that now?
Yes, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, if it's that eighty-three thousand dollars in golf season savings, then yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right, any other questions for me? I actually have to shoot out of here, but are there any other questions for me before I, before I?
Everybody good?
Head out.
All right, yeah, thank you very much.
Yes sir, thank y'all very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Carnegie, we'll move on to the, um, capital improvement plan update, um. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so there were a couple of updates that, that we talked about at the last workshop, and actually Amanda is going to outline those for us, but one thing I wanted to draw your attention to is down at the bottom of the first page where it says facility improvements. That very first line courthouse ADA upgrade design, that's a, that's a duplicate. You can just mark through that. That's all included in the, in the line below it. So Amanda's gonna outline the, the major updates in the CIP. And one of the things that I would ask in advance as we go through this is when we're done, if you, if you're comfortable and you don't have any more questions, we would ask for a consensus, to adopt the CIP and then that way we can get it on the agenda for the next, because we don't have another budget workshop between now and the next, and the next board meeting. So, once again, as we go through this, um, we would ask for consensus when we're done.
So, excuse me, the, uh, updates to the CIP were all of the ones that were requested at the previous workshop. Um, all of the gas, uh, tax chip seal, uh, those have been, tho- those were approved by the board at, uh, an earlier meeting, so all of those numbers are here, uh, on the summary page, which is this first page. Uh, so you can see all of those. The only, uh, road project here that does not have an amount is the county road eighteen. It is a DOT project that's been submitted. We just don't, don't have the number for that yet, but I wanted to make sure that that remained on there, so that you can see that's coming up in the future. Um, of course, under facility improvements, there is a duplicate there, apologize for that. Um, the courthouse ADA upgrade design and, uh, following that, the construction estimate. So we have put in an appropriations request for these, uh, project, but there is no guarantee that that would be approved. Uh, if you look, uh, past that on years twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, I have put an amount, um, that is basically broken out. This would be a possibility if, for you guys to consider if you would like to start putting those funds to, or funds for that project into, um, some kind of separated account or however you would like to do that. Um, each one of these does include a five percent escalator, so that each year you, you, just in case of inflation or whatever things cost when you get to the end of this five-year cycle, you will have that additional funds on top of the original, um, price. So I, I would ask you to consider either, um, uh, either one of those or some combination of that to, to be able to put those funds aside, because we know that that is an important project, um, to the courthouse, to the clerk's office, to basically everyone, and we want to make sure that that can be funded in the future. I believe everything else is just the updates that were listed, uh, from the previous, uh, meeting. Uh, so following the summary, I did break it out by departments, just like before, public works, um, mosquito control, uh, fire rescue, and then finally the courthouse facility improvements are on a separate page. So if you have any questions?
And I do, I just have one thing. Mr. Jason, not trying to put you on the spot, but, but these, we have these, uh, on this, uh, equipment and fleet. We have the, um, in the right, we're calling them the right thing for the, um, the MAC roll-off, uh, cause I, I think before we were calling them dump trucks or something instead of the, the roll-offs, am I correct? Um, I can, I, yeah, I can dig out my, um, built the last one right here. That, the one from the last meeting? Okay. Yeah, remember we were talking about different, different, uh, equipment and, and then after, I was talking to you later on, and, uh, and we said it was in the wrong categories. So we needed to move some around. This is from our last workshop. So, so I guess all I'm saying is all these are in the right spot where you want them.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, they are correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, just wanna make sure. All right, thank you, man.
Thank you.
That's all I have for that. It's just up to the board to discuss and decide if you would like to, um, put this for approval, uh, minus the, um, extra item on the facility improvements that's doubled there. Um, so if you wanted, like to put this on the next board meeting for final approval or whatever changes or specifics you would like to decide about putting the funds for the courthouse improvements, um, separated, we would need to. That's what you would like, like to do.
Do, do I need to call for public comments? Cause I know Mr. Still said he had a comment he would like to make, um.
This is a workshop, so you can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Still, I remember in your comments earlier, you said you wanted to make a comment about the Cypress boat ramp and it, and it's something we're fixing to approve.
Uh, yes, uh, Paul Still, one four one six seven Southwest Hundred First Avenue, dark. Uh, I'm very concerned about the, the Cypress Road, uh, Cypress Run Boat Ramp. You're, you're spending a lot of money out of the boat fees to redesign the work that DRMP did. Uh, what I would suggest, rather than spend that money for a redesign, you simply use the boat, uh, licensing fees to fix the boat ramp that's there. And what needs to happen to that boat ramp is, it's pretty simple. You just need to remove the vegetation and you did a vegetation removal, uh, for the Sampson River, so we know that's gonna cost roughly six, seven thousand dollars. And then the county has the equipment to restore that canal to its original depth, from the boat ramp out into Lake Sampson. Uh, and that, you'd have to come up with the cost from public works to see what they would think that would be. And then, uh, you have a, an interesting boat ramp that was installed, installed in Sampson City at, uh, three pipes. But, uh, it's a boat ramp that has a guardrail in front of it, so it, it can never be used, and it's one that could easily be, picked up and moved. It's a, a series of concrete, uh, sections. And you just pick that one up and move it, uh, to the Cypress Run. And now you've got a functional boat ramp for, uh, very little money. The uh, boat ramp that was designed by DRMP involved dredging, uh, Lake Sampson, which I think is gonna be almost impossible to get permitted, uh, because there is this alternative of using the old boat ramp. And one of the requirements of a, of a permit is that there's no alternative to, uh, dredging sovereign lands. And so I, uh, just urge you to spend some time having your, uh, somebody look at, at those alternatives. And, and then, and the final thing would be to try to get the, the money back from DRMP that they spent on, uh, that they billed the county for and the county paid. And that if, if you can get the money back from DRMP, then you just tell FWC that, you know, you're not gonna proceed with that project. It's just, it's just seems to be a waste to pour more money into, uh, a project that probably will not be able to be funded. You may be able, and you're using money that could be used to actually fix the boat ramp. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else said, like, I'm gonna probably comment.
If I could. Can I just respond back to them?
Yes.
Um, well, Mr. Still, to tell you, this project was started in nineteen seventy-nine when the land was donated. That's how, when you said, don't make a hasty's decision. They've been working on this since nineteen seventy-nine, so I don't think that they've rushed through it at all. Um, we are, this is a grant that we're receiving, correct?
Yes ma'am, from FWC.
Okay, and, um, we, as far as DMRP, um, the reason that they are no longer there is because they were not getting, basically they weren't getting the job done. So that's why, um, there is a plan. I don't think we could use DR, uh, DMRP's plan, correct? So, um, that's why we're moving forward and finally, um, because of, of their consistent processing and calling people and getting things moving, we are moving forward. Slowly, at a, at a turtle's ra- or speed, but we are moving forward. Are we supposed to have a meeting? Or, no, okay. But just to let you know, this, um, and, and the thing about it is, is we may end up using part of that canal, but our goal is to have a nice boat ramp, something along the lines of, um, Lake Santa Fe?
Jennifer Lake, yeah.
Santa Fe Lake, um, something that the families can come and enjoy, spend the day if they wanted to. Something, um, appealing for the county, uh, that, that is our goal, okay?
And I, I appreciate that, but I think the, the piece that you may not be aware of is actually this project originated from the Bradford Sound Water Conservation District. And, uh, uh, going for the, the funding. And, uh, then we were sort of cut out of the process and DRMP came up with this, in my opinion, a totally ridiculous design. And as I said, I I think that, uh, again, you, if you, what, what you have out there now is all you're gonna get is the plants. So then you have to go after the money.
Yes, sir.
And it, it's not, I don't think this is gonna be a, a project that FWC is gonna be willing to fund unless it's a whole lot, uh, doesn't involve, uh, dredging of sovereign land. And so you, 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 that's the issue. And I think you just need to get some good advice on, you know, whether in fact you, you go through, you start the permitting process, and if your permits are denied, that's the end of it. You get your money, well, but you don't get any, you don't get the money that you've going to pay the new engineering firm for. So it just, all I'm saying is, take a more close look at this, and I'd be glad to sit down with you and explain the process one-on-one, so that we don't, so we end up with a boat ramp that's usable. One of the problems is, of course, that's an extremely dangerous place to have a boat ramp entrance, because it's a blind curve. You come across the culvert that drains Cypress Run, and you have to turn right into the boat ramp.
Yes.
I almost got hit there with the log truck coming. So it's, the design is the, the real critical point. And if the engineer is not aware of, or doesn't recognize, those designs need to be changed, again, you're just wasting your money.
Thank you.
All right. And just, just the comment that you had asked earlier, oh, whether or not the, need to set aside funding for the, the building and the ADA improvements for the courthouse. I think that would be an important piece to set aside annually, those funds for the capital improvement.
So that we have a consensus of the board to go ahead and approve it exactly as mandated?
A consensus for it to be placed on the next agenda.
Placed on the agenda to, to be approved.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Am I good? Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Next is mosquito control. Mr. Dodds, I don't know if you, Mr., wants to tackle this one?
Mr. Jackson.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Good afternoon.
Hey, ma'am.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
How are you? Yeah. Know the, this year, we got double the amount for mosquito control than we had last year. And we've been having a little extra money left over because of the dry seasons we've been having. We have to have documentation, you know, most of the time, of landing count rates, how many mosquitoes are out there, how many phone calls, you know? So there's a lot to it. And when it's dry, we don't get to go out as much. But we're going to start doing some larva sighting and stuff like that. I've put in some materials and stuff that we're going to start doing that, and to start spending more of the money. Because now it's going to be double. So we're going to up our spraying process. We're going to spray probably five hours a night versus the three hours that we've been doing. So we're going to be spending a lot more money. And it, it fluctuates a lot, because you never know what the state's going to give us. This year, they gave us double, because of some of the people that were participating in it, they dropped out. And when they drop out, that leaves us little counties with more money that they can just distribute between us. So.
And one of the things you have to, you all have this, I guess, depending on the, the weather, if it's rainy, or if you spray, you have to wait a certain amount of time before you go back again, or?
Yes.
And that sort of thing, right?
Yeah, with the humidity and the winds and the rains, you know, we, we have to watch the weather quite often. If we get out there and start spraying, it rains on us, just drizzles a little bit, then we have to stop. And then we, then we're wasting our product, which is thirty-six hundred dollars for thirty gallons of product. So it does cost quite a bit of money. But like I say, it just fluctuates quite a bit. And we are trying to get into the larva sighting a little bit to try to offset some of them costs that we can start doing some during the day. And, but that, the larva sighting product costs a lot more, so it will kind of start spending a little bit more of that money that we're starting to, that we were accumulating and not being able to spend. And just like the, the grapple truck that y'all were talking about, we're planning on taking a portion of the money that we have in mosquito control, because we can justify that as a mosquito control machine product. We can get tires out of ditches and help the road department with their, their day-to-day stuff. So half of it will come out of the mosquito control, and it will come out of solid waste.
For the truck?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Do you guys go out and do any part of that?
Right now, no. The road department does.
Okay. Okay. So you're going to be spraying five hours a night?
Yes, ma'am. There's three of us, it's me.
That's what I was going to ask, how many of you are there?
Yeah, there's three of us.
So, may I ask another question? So in those areas that you, Mr. Dodds, know, like northeast, I think the Hundred and Seventy First and Third?
That's where I live.
Okay. Where Miss, the one resident who has an abundant amount of mosquito gestation in the area, so can you spend a little, I guess, extra time in those?
Yes, ma'am.
Really, really bad, bad areas?
Yeah, we, usually whenever we get a phone call, we go and hit it right then.
Matt could practice some of that larva control as well.
Yeah. And I know, Mr. Dodds, and I both went and bought some cans and spray and helped out, and then you all went out with the truck, so, in those particular areas.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Is board good? Because we're moving forward the way this is set up? Yes? Sure.
It actually connects up with what I said earlier that, this morning about mowing. One of the problems that we have is that when you mow beyond the ditch, then the tractors get in the ditch, and you end up having these potholes that fill up with water and, and are there as breeding grounds for mosquitoes. And then at least out on, in the Sampson City area, the ATV users make that into a bug bog, mud bog for them, and it makes it even worse. And so by having less of those pockets that can serve as mosquito habitats, you're better off. And those are the kind of habitats that would work well with the larvicide kinds of approach. You go around and you see where these are, and you apply the larvicide that then kills the mosquitoes when they're in the water. And so I, I, I very much encourage, it's very encouraging to hear that it looks like the county is going to be moving more towards the larvicide, or moving, using the larvicides as a, as an option, because I think that's very important for us. It's very hard to. And one other thing that we had in the Extension Office several years ago, we had a program where we had people throughout the community who trapped mosquitoes and counted them, and provided counts. And that sort of fell by the wayside when Jim DeValerio left the Extension Office. And it might be worth getting that up and running again, just, just so you have some more data on where mosquitoes are and the populations. And then the other key is that you can also get those mosquitoes identified. So if you're having problems with disease-carrying mosquitoes, that shows up for you. So, thank you.
And, and Mr. Jackson, if, if you don't mind, I know that we had a conversation about this, if, if you don't mind, but, you know, with ThermoCell being in Hampton, and, you know, and, and as we were talking about, you know, do we work with ThermoCell? And you was telling me that you've already been in touch with them, and you know the gentleman?
Yeah.
That runs it. And anyway, would, would you want to share with the board any update or anything, or how they?
I haven't got, spoke with him since our upcoming season, but I'm in constant contact with him. He emails me when I go out and spray in their area. Because they're a testing facility, they asked that we stay away from their, that area when they're testing the mosquitoes. But I did ask him, I said, "Look," I said, "I know those are screened-in little huts, and they, they usually house about, I don't know how many mos- quite a few mosquitoes, I don't want to give a number. But if they do have a, an escape or something, please let us know." And he said, "Oh, by all means, I will." So we got a good working relationship with them. And he did say that anytime we need anything, just to let him know, and they will be glad to help us. So, and about the buzzbusters, you know, there was a lot of volunteers, well, people just, you know, not volunteering anymore. And I think it's more of, the ag is doing more other things now. So I've got in contact with University of Florida. It's no cost to us. So they're going to be coming down and showing me some more about trapping and stuff, which I kind of know all about that. But they're going to help us out with our trapping. And they'll send the mosquitoes back to the university. They do their counts. That's more surveillance for us. Like when we have a hurricane or something, when we need the state to come in to spray, we have all that information to provide to emergency management, and that's for our surveillance.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask him one more question? What's the rule with your spray when there are animals? Let's say if somebody has a farm with cattle or farm animal? Is there a frequency which you can and can't, or you just can't?
No, we, we can spray around animals. It's safe for animals. It depends on the, the citizen. If they don't want us spraying in their area, then we try to work with them. But if you've got a neighbor that's wanting to spray, they get the spray. So.
Okay.
Especially if it becomes a health issue.
Okay, but it can be done around there? Okay. That's what I need.
But you have to watch it around them bees, not the bee?
Yeah, the bees, we have to be, we work well with the bee association. And if they're registered with the state, the, the ag department has it, and they send me a list of them. And we, we work around that area, that we, we stay away from those as best we can. Unless there's an outbreak, then, then there's other things. We have a virus out West Nile. We've got so many chicken gunia and all that stuff. If that happens in our county, then all that's out the door. Then we, we, we take care of public health.
Well, sir, just for, and I know I speak for all of us, thank you for the job you do. We greatly appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman. The last item that we need to discuss is a cost of living adjustment. Some of the constitutionals have approached me recently about what the board's intention is in terms of a COLA. So what I've done is I've provided you with three different amounts. There's a three percent, a four percent, and a five percent. And you can see there what the total cost would be associated with each raise. So just need some direction going forward as we prepare next year's budget, and, and we'll go from there.
All right. Any comments on that?
What did we do last year? We did five percent last year?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we did.
And I'll be honest, board, that's what I was thinking going ahead, with another five this year. Simply with everything going up the way it is, I picked up twelve, one dozen of eggs, seven dollars from the Dollar General. Pretty soon, it's going to be a dollar an egg. I mean, seven dollars, you know? So, you know, and, and also, there was a time where we didn't give our employees raises for many, many years. You know, so that, that would be my, you know, my vote would be to go with the five percent, but, but whatever.
The, can I say something real quick?
Yeah, yes, sir.
The, the, what the government adjusted for inflation this year was two-point-five percent. That's basically what they give Social Security. So that, that's what they base Social Security on this year, is two-point-five percent COLA starting January.
Yes, and also, the CPIU was three-point-two percent. Three-point-two.
But, but I will say this, we have some very, very good employees, you know, and if you want to keep them, you need to pay them. That's, that's the bottom line. I, I have, I think I was talking with Ben this morning, but I'm, I'm shocked what some of these shops are now paying for labor and stuff. You know, I mean, it's, it's a good thing, but it's just, things are expensive. I mean, it's, everything has really gone up. And, and like I said, we have excellent employees in Bradford County. And the, the question is, do we, do we want to keep them? You know, if we want to keep them, we got to take care of our employees. That's, that's the way I look at it. Even when I was a business owner, that's the way I looked at it. If I had good employees, I wanted to keep them, because they're hard, they're hard to come by. I mean.
So, so are we bound, are we bound by the, the three, three percent, four, or five? Can we go something in between, like a three-point-five? Or do we have to stick with?
No, you can, any amount. You can go below three or above five as well.
So could we consider a three-point-five? So we'll be within the, you know, what the state feds do, but not far over that? Is that a consideration? So that they'll still get something that's within the range of the norm for now?
There's, basically, there's, it looks like forty thousand dollars between each one, three to four to five. Forty thousand each time you jump up across the board. So as you see, even the five percent total would be two-hundred-and-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars and fourteen cent. So, but, again, I'm, I'm just thinking about people like in our road department and stuff like that. We've got a lot of people that don't really make a lot of money, so that's, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
And it's not that no, that they're not worthy of it. They're worthy of a ten percent if we can afford to do it. But when we're looking at conserving, cutting back on our budget, that we can still provide an increase, but at a reasonable amount. That's why I was suggesting the three-point-five, which would be somewhat in line with, across the board, increase that the state and federal are doing.
And that's why I asked how much we gave, because five percent is, is quite a boost. I thought maybe that we could do a little less this year, since we did give five percent last year.
Any other comments? Anyone, or?
Well, I just, you know, we had a, Miss Dana's still here. She did a presentation at our last Thursday meeting, and, you know, with our reserves and, you know, seeing everything going in the opposite direction, and then looking at other ways that we're trying to save money, you know, we really need to take that into consideration. You know, so, you know, we, we, we say we're trying to cut, and then we keep spending. And so, I mean, I can, I can tell you just personally, I mean, what, what my COLA was, was less than the lowest number on here. And so, and that's in the private sector, a company that's profitable. And I know that we're not here to make a profit. We're here to provide services, but we need to break even at least and still have the reserves for the rainy day. So I totally agree that we have excellent employees. I mean, that, that doesn't go, you know, unnoticed. And I don't think it goes unnoticed by anybody on this board or any department head here. But, you know, certainly, you know, I think that should be taken into consideration. And I, I do think that last year's number was very generous. And I understand that we had not, you know, been giving them in the past, but, you know, we, we really need to consider where we are fiscally and, and where we're going to be next year. And, you know, if it's smaller, you know, each time, then, you know, if we're able to do that, then we can. But I, I just don't think we need to jump up, you know, to the five percent and make that something that we do every year. So that's just my comments.
Could I also say one more thing?
Sure.
This money we've been getting interest off of, we're fixing to give, not give, but that project with the city, we won't have four million going out of reserves.
Slowly, right.
Over a year period.
Over what?
I don't know what the project span is, but it'd probably be a one-year, one-year project, something like that.
Yeah, it'll, it'll certainly chisel away.
And then also, we have one-point-seven million, because we still don't know what's going on with the fairground. And then also, we have 1.7 million because we still don't know what's going on with the fairgrounds. So you're talking about near $6 million that's fixing to be gone.
Yeah.
And, you know, with that money, that's what we were drawing at 5%. Most of that $900,000, we were in the black last year.
Yeah, and, you know, and again, saying what I said about Ms. LaFollette, you know, having the presentation where I don't want to spend that money on the fairgrounds, I don't want to see the fairgrounds go away. So I understand, you know, that there's comments about other things where we could put that money, but I would hate to see this county lose the fair. I'd hate to see it for the county, I'd hate to see it for the kids. And so, but again, that's, that's, that's money I just don't even want to spend. But again, given the situation that we're in and being that I don't want to see somebody else come in there and try to bail it out and do something else with it. And we don't even know where we are with that right now. I mean, it's just so cloudy and up in the air, but if it doesn't, you know, go our way and it goes, however it ends up, we've done everything we can. I mean, we've, we've tried, we've offered, and we've done everything. And I know we're, I'm getting a little bit off-topic here, and I'm not trying to be editorial, but, you know, at the same time, people need to know that if this doesn't work out, we tried twice. We tried last year and we tried this year.
Right.
And so I don't want to be slung in the mud because we didn't try.
Right.
Right.
I agree.
And the thing is, like you said, we, we know where we're at. I've, I've been talking to some people, we've got big plans for that fairground property if we can, if we get, if the county gets it. So we know where we're at. And also, by just, if you think about it this way, by just, what was it, a year and a half ago when we were trying to do it? And until now, we've already lost, what is it, $237,000? And then it's costing us extra just because we couldn't close out this exact same deal last year. So now here we are, a year and a half later, it's going to cost the county another 200, I believe it's $237,000 more.
And the longer it goes on, the more expensive it gets because the default rate that was incurred in November of last year is 24.99%.
Yeah.
And I personally don't think that we should go all that further. If they, when is their next meeting?
They had a meeting last night.
Right.
Soon as I get out of here, I'm going to get on the phone with our attorney and find out what's going on because the two attorneys are talking.
I think it should be a very simple decision and because, like you said, we, we just can't afford to keep waiting and paying all that interest on top of that.
That's right.
Right. To be honest, I've had, I don't even know how many conversations with Bob Milner. And I, I really thought that we were on the same page. And, and to be honest with you, just from hearing about it this morning, that, that they didn't go through what they were talking, I'm shocked. Just, you know, just not getting into a lot of details, but, but, so, here we, here we sit. And the bottom line is, is just exactly what Commissioner Daughtry said. Do I want another $1.7 million headache? Not really. But I do not want to see that fair go under for the citizens of Bradford County. That's, that's just the bottom line. And I, and we could take it and make it so much more with our resources. And it'd all be about the children and the citizens. That's, that's what it's all about, the bottom line. Because I'll tell you what, two or three years from now, if you look down there and there's businesses there and no fairgrounds, I mean, that, that's going to be terrible. I mean, I went to the fair, my kids went to the fair, my grandkids are going to the fair. Probably everybody on this, on this board could say the same thing, you know? I mean, it's just, anyway, that's, that's, that's where we're at.
So back on the subject of the COLA, Ms. LaFollette, what if we did 3.5? What would that, it's $40,000 if we did 3, right? And then what would it be at 3.5? What would that dollar? $140,000? But $40,000 at 3%, but a half a percent more is 100? Okay, I got you. Thanks. Okay.
Board, I would recommend we stay at 3% and then let's see where we are. Let's see where we are, we'll see where we are next year because I think we are certainly going to get hit. And so, I mean, if we want to do something, then, you know, that, again, if these are our choices, if, if there's anything anybody else would recommend, whether it's, you know, 2.5 or, you know, but I, I think right now the minimum of 3 is something that we should consider.
And, and I understand too, especially with concern buying the fairgrounds at 1.7 and...
I would have to agree.
I agree.
Okay, so 3, 3, are you okay with 3?
So we have a consensus at a 3% COLA?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, that's, that's everything that's on here? No other comments or anything?
I got to stand.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks, thanks, everyone, meeting is adjourned.
Our next budget is that, on the 1st of April, yeah.